This conference will now be recorded.
Show that we have this today supervised walk supervisor get part myself supervisor.
Is your microphone?
I cannot hear.
I'm sorry?
I cannot hear you.
And we have remotely today, Mr. Banks and Mr. Guy, and I don't think Mr. Banks is online yet, but I will go ahead and make a motion for Mr. Banks and Mr. Guy to fully participate in the meeting due to exceptional circumstances. Is there a second? You move it, okay?
I'll second.
Session, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Also introduce, I'm going too fast here, Laura Leroy, our district manager interim, and Tony Pierce, our attorney. That will get started with audience's public comment. We do have one agenda item. Is we'll let Laura call out the names of the ones that have signed in. Two that are online and let them have their time also. So with that, Laura, would you call our first speaker?
Sure. I have Richard Rittenberg regarding the agenda item 3CII, PPAC O&M. Please keep in mind you have five minutes. There's a cool little timer thing here. It'll flash yellow when you're getting close and red when you're done. Please step up to the podium and give your name.
And what the board is going to do is we're going to refrain on any dialogue with each of the speakers or otherwise we will be here till breakfast for tomorrow morning. So each speaker go ahead and give their thing and then we'll follow it with the next one. And we'll take that issue.
I did sign up to talk about agenda item 3CII. And I really shouldn't say the same thing two different times. So what is your preference?
Go ahead and make your presentation that you will make and then we'll bring up that when we get to it at the in the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rich Rittenberg. I live in Pelican Preserve and I am a member of the board of the Pelican Preserve Community Association. We'll preface this by saying together, the district and the association own virtually all the common assets Pelican Preserve. We have to work together, govern this correctly, and I would say that the relationship of working together for governance has been broken and is threatened by this item that's on the agenda. PPAC has proposed removing landscaping from the O&M agreement. It's presently performed by the association by Castle Management managing the Ameriscape contract, which is about three quarters of a million dollars. PPAC proposes to replace the association role with a volunteer subgroup of PPAC called the Landscape Working Group. We accept the Landscape Working Group participation in an advisory role only, but object and disagree with placing day-to-day management of critical landscaping function in the hands of a volunteer group. They have neither the experience nor the plans or preparation to perform this ongoing management task. They say they will rely on support resources from the district staff as yet unspecified and undefined, but in an email yesterday identified staff support at two hours a week. Two hours a week for $750,000 contract just proves the point that they don't really know what they need and the risk of this thing going south is serious. Pelican Preserve landscape operations involve a complex association-owned irrigation system, jointly used by the association, neighborhoods separately owned golf course. The LWG volunteers have no experience with the intricacies of this system. Let's talk about the PPAC meeting recently held at which I would say procedural irregularities abounded. A member of the CDD Board of Supervisors inserted himself into the planning and deliberations and dominated the committee meeting. He assisted the Landscape Work Group Leader with a joint preparation, planning, and presentation. This was no longer an independent PPAC meeting or decision. PPAC has lost its effective role by allowing a CDD supervisor to dominate and unduly influence its deliberations. The long-term chair of the PPAC, Phil Miesi, stated in an email on May 3rd, "I generally agree that some of the changes proposed by PPAC is not a good idea. Using volunteers for the day-to-day landscaping oversight is likely to result in less than optimal results for the community. I am hopeful that the board will table the PPAC motion and give us some time to put a truly collaborative effort together." It's time to restore PPAC to its rightful important role as an independent advisory committee to the GS CDD. Failure to do that, every one of your meetings here is going to be loaded with Pelican Preserve residents raising issues previously dealt with by independent PPAC. Long-term landscape planning and financial reserves district responsibility have been neglected. Lightning destroyed trees have not been replaced. We're told that PPAC has more than a million dollars in reserves. No details have been provided. The current proposed change, the O&M agreement, with its operational risks and uncertainties.
Can you wrap it up there, Rich?
Thank you. And lack of any detailed operation planning must be rejected. We should restore the working agreement between the PPAC and the association. We need to be long-term partners. So this really ill-conceived proposal should be rejected. Thank you for your time. I have copy of these remarks if you would like to distribute them.
Please.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
William.
Sirico.
Same agenda items, 3CII.
Thank you. My name is William Sirico and I'm both the resident Pelican Preserve and a member of the Pelican Preserve Community Association Board of Directors. I'm appearing today to present the views of that organization with regard to proposal by the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee to amend the facilities operation and management agreement currently in existence between the district and the Pelican Preserve Community Association. Some background is important to place this proposal in perspective. Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee was formed as a committee of the district during a time when the developer of the Pelican Preserve was in financial distress and the community association was dominated by its representatives. There existed a danger that the district systems and facilities within Pelican Preserve would not receive priority and maintenance required to preserve the standards of the community. PPAC was formed to advise you, the district supervisors, on the allocation appropriation of not out at Bolorum tax funds collected from the residents of Pelican Preserve to be spent within Pelican Preserve absent the potential self-serving interest of the developer. It was and remains a purely advisory budgetary committee charged by you to oversee in your stead the expenditure of those funds during the period of this cautionary approach was necessary. The committee generally performed its advisory duties with distinction. The matter under discussion today proposes to remove from the O&M agreement all landscaping-related items. It further proposes to transfer the management of contractors maintaining district landscaping-related systems and facilities to newly-formed Landscape Working Group, a subcommittee of the advisory committee. Under the existing O&M agreement, this oversight has been provided by the Pelican Preserve Community Association. This proposal substantially changes the role of the PPAC, has the potential to affect negatively and significantly the Pelican Preserve community, and demands careful analysis before being enacted. The LWG was formed by PPAC with the approval and cooperation of the community association, primarily to advise the supervisors you in the solicitation of proposals and the evaluation of bids to replace and improve previously existing landscape-related maintenance contracts for district systems and facilities within, surrounding, and adjacent to Pelican Preserve. It performed this task well. Then, contrary to what has been maintained by some proponents, it moved to take direct management control of the contracts that had been negotiated without meaningful collaboration, cooperation, or coordination with the only organization elected by the residents of Pelican Preserve and authorized by the Board of Supervisors to perform that function, the community association. Let's examine two central rationales offered by the proponents of this change. First, they maintain that the LWG can do it better than the association. They point to the fact that amongst the roughly six core members of the LWG, there was one member with a newly minted certificate in horticulture, one more seasoned horticulturist and a former owner of a nursery, and current landscape designer with deeply held beliefs in Florida-friendly landscape practices. This is all laudable. But this proposal isn't about horticultural practices or, as district council has maintained, about who owns the systems and facilities. It's about management, a subject area in which the LWG has not demonstrated competence. In fact, the community association can point to several instances where essential and time-sensitive landscape services have been delayed by the LWG's inability to perform. This proposal would ask a volunteer subcommittee of a volunteer unelected advisory committee, a subcommittee with no legal persona nor supporting organizational structure to manage for the public benefit nearly $750,000 of annual government district contract expenditures. The LWG proposes to make up for its lack of organizational depth by relying on district staff without any analysis of the availability of that staff or the associated costs. The district is currently budgeting roughly two hours per week of staff time to interface with the LWG. Conversely, the community association is available to it. A community management company insured, bonded, and licensed to do business in the state of Florida. It provides 24/7 support services without reliance on district staff and specializes in the management of contractors providing services to communities such as Pelican Preserve. Second proponents complained the LWG could do it cheaper than the association. This argument centers on roughly $50,000 annually funded by the district to recompense the association for the costs incurred in managing landscaping-related activities covered by the O&M agreement. The proponents of this change, the O&M agreement, maintain that this cost can be eliminated by using unpaid volunteers. These savings are ephemeral. We've already noted the LWG intends to use district staff to support its activities. A proper accounting would realize that these services are not free. Further, the LWG proposes not to eliminate these costs but to reallocate them. They propose to use these funds toward the estimated $700,000 of deferred required landscape replacement and upgrade required with it.
I will. Thank you. I have one more point to make, please.
I can't, I'll give you a printed version of these, but I'd like to point out two very quick things. Within the O&M contract today reads these two recitals. "The association is responsible for operating and maintaining certain common areas contiguous to the areas where the district systems and facilities are located within the Pelican Preserve community, and because the association's facilities are located close proximity to the areas in which the district systems are located, and the members of the association are direct beneficiaries of the district's systems and facilities, the association is uniquely positioned and qualified to operate district facilities and systems. Further, the district and the association is also quote, "agree that have the association operate and maintain the district's systems and facilities pursuant to this maintenance agreement is in the best interest of the district and the property owners within Pelican Preserve." Before you're considering adopting the proposal of the PPAC, please answer this question. What has changed that justifies violating the understandings I've just cited to you? Understandings that have survived every iteration and amendment to the O&M agreement since its inception. I have copies of unfortunately too long statement. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
And your attention. And of course, both Mr. Rittenberg and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any other emails and no one online. I asked if there was anyone who wanted to comment and no one responded. So to the best of my knowledge, that is the only speakers we have for today.
Again, I didn't catch all that. The ones online have?
No one.
No one now?
Nope. No one online. Well, there's no one online who said that they wanted to make a comment. We don't have any additional emails or faxes or anything.
Anybody else in the audience that, as a result of those, want to make any comments? Moving on, staff reports.
A few items. Number one, regards to, we have to do revisions to the permit criteria manual. If you recall, that we had a new conversation, presentation with the board with regards to possible changes to the permit criteria manual. And then the draft was prepared with underlining and strike through showing some suggested changes. And the purpose of this is today's consideration supported any further changes.
I cannot hear. Sorry, Mr. Speaker.
Your microphone, please.
It's on now. Sorry about that.
Tony, get a pull your mic down.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Guy?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. If you recall that on the permit criteria manual, the staff had asked the board to authorize advertising for consideration of rulemaking. We posted that. And then staff came back and proposed some revisions to the permit criteria manual and a strike through an underlying format. And what we have in front of you, we want to schedule the public hearing. It'll be the first meeting in June now because of the advertising time constraints. But wanted to know if there are any additional comments or thoughts that the board had with regards to the permit criteria manual suggested changes, if the board was comfortable with them, or if the board wanted some additional edits. And Mr. Hall is trying to hide in the back.
That's what I was looking for.
But he asked me if he needed to run away and I told him he better not. No, no, it was a collaborative effort. It was myself, Laura, Leslie, and Kenny. Leslie has moseyed in. To come up with that. And I think at the last board meeting, Kenny explained some of the rationale for especially the above-ground, not no longer having above-ground vaults. An idea of also having consistency across the board in the capital equipment for operational efficiency and maintenance purposes and expenditures. And so that's why we tailored it to specific types. Provide a language in there that the board may approve alternates, but again, the idea is to try to have an across-the-board system that's with easily interchangeable parts. So you don't end up with four manufacturers of control panels, three manufacturers of submersibles, and Lord knows what else. And those are the only two technical phrases I know. And Kenny will fill in the rest.
That's the only place where we basically went sole source.
Yes. Well, not, yeah. But again, I think we, and the board, in my opinion, has the ability to do that and to say that we provide the rationale. It's not just something that's arbitrary appreciation. When you have a system such as this to have a, I'll call it mix and match, doesn't work. And Kenny made that point very clear during our staff meeting. So I don't know if the board had any additional thoughts or additions or suggestions to it. And if not, we will publish it for the hearing, first meeting in June, so we can get this in the manual.
Only question I've got has been down the road before on this issue of sole source. Do we have any weasel words in there that should our vendor of the sole source get greedy, for lack of a better term, that we can go back and make a change without?
A comparable.
I'm sorry.
A comparable item.
Yeah, yeah. We do that because we have, we got ourselves tied in to the point that we, we can't even have it. We don't even have any wiggle room should they do that.
Let me get, I think we have a language in there about alternative designs can be approved by the board. I mean, I think we've inserted that in there. Let me double check.
We got that.
Let me double check. I'll bring it up. I was running out printing out all kinds of fun hard copies and I'm not sure I made a hard copy of that.
Doesn't your item four I have on the screen, it says provide flexibility and discretion of the board to approve alternative specifications and designs?
Right, number four.
That's it. I think it's actually in the text also.
Well, it just provides us some flexibility because I've seen it happen where you sole source a vendor and they get real nasty on the price.
Or they go out of business.
Yeah, sorry.
Or they go out of business.
Or they go out of business.
Or they have other issues.
It looks like we've got an alternative, so I'm fine.
We'll make sure of that when we have the hearing before the board. We'll make sure that that alternative language is definitely there.
Board, any questions?
No, the only comment that I would make is the critical nature of the permit criteria manual that has saved the residents of Pelican Preserve hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars when Cypress Grove was developed because the developer now had to put in electric to the ponds, had to put in aeration to the ponds, had to put in downstream drainage. So it has saved our community one heck of a lot of money. So I thank the board. I've read the proposal. I fully support it.
No questions?
Tony, do we need any action at this point in time? Just that you're going to go ahead and do the advertising?
I guess just authorize advertising it for the first meeting in June, for the adoption hearing.
Motion to advertise for the first meeting?
I so move.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. And at that time, again, if the board looks at it and has some additional thoughts, once they see the actual text in the context of the document, they can still make some changes at that time. Next item with regards to it is, we don't yet have the proposed revisions to utility rule. We've been sort of sidetracked on items. Leslie has given us ideas. As Kenny, it's up to me to put the language together. So that's on me. We will have that for the next board meeting though. Kenny?
We would like to address the master meter communities, the irrigation.
It's potable. The potable.
Yes. I just need to put that in the context of the rule itself. So we'll have that for the next board meeting. Okay. The text so that the board can see the actual text that we want to advertise for adoption. Couple items by May that aren't on the agenda, but like to have some discussion and authorization on. If you recall at the last meeting, Laura was served, I think, just before the last meeting with a, there we go, petition in eminent domain by Lee County for a roadway segment. If you want to go all the way up, Laura, in the sketch and legal description that's attached to this so the community can see.
Who authored this?
County Attorney's Office.
The county?
The county Attorney's Office. That's a segment right there that the county wants to acquire by eminent domain because of, and in talking with the assistant county attorney who's been very helpful and very nice on this, Jennifer Goodmore, the county had an appraisal performed, has been contacting the last surviving trustee, or as we went through this whole exercise before, of the Dissolved Fairway Lakes Association, who was named as the defendant in this lawsuit. And the county has attempted to go to the process of negotiating the acquisition in advance without going through eminent domain, but with no success. So the county has filed the action petition eminent domain and the parcel, the appraised value that they determined from their appraisal, independent appraisal, is $175,000, I believe, for that parcel. The district is not being?
Essentially the right of way?
Yes. So the?
In the wrong business.
Yeah, the, what you do not have is the declaration of taking an estimate of value. It says a good faith estimate of value based upon a valid appraisal, a parcel 108, which is this parcel is $175,100.
Who would they go to if it's a defunct?
That's their issue. Whether it goes to the registry of the court and then it, but the reason why the district is a party to this, the district has, and who goes to your staff, a utility lien from 2018 that's recorded against the property for 500 and some odd dollars and cents.
I thought it was for 175,000.
No. And the county is offering to, yeah, we don't have the exact number yet for that, but the county, the current lien amount was 55538 back in 2018. And the proposed stipulation to resolve the litigation, I have this email from Jennifer Goodmore from this morning, is my preference to resolve the litigation between the district and the county with two stipulations. One will be a stipulation to the order of taking, which would be filed before the order of taking hearing on July 18th, and the other will be stipulation for final judgment. The stipulation for final judgment is being finalized, but includes language that the county agrees to pay the entire balance of the outstanding 55538 lien, the satisfaction of the lien interest, attorney's fees, and any other fees. Please let me know your thoughts. My recommendation is the board say yes. Do that.
Why is this, I wouldn't pull my plats out. It's not a major deal, but my plat doesn't overlay with this. Why would the dimensions be different?
I don't know. You know, that, as far as the technical aspects of what the survey was, what the plat was or anything else, that's up to the county to make sure that they have the right parcel land that they want. The focus here is that from the district's perspective, we're named as a party because we have that outstanding lien and the county is willing to pay that lien plus interest plus my attorney's fees.
And we have, I'm sure, some document from a defunct corporation rights to that right of way for our utilities. We have water, sewer.
We have, the district has easements. The eminent domain just acquires the fee simple. It doesn't?
So the easement's intact?
It doesn't, it doesn't affect the easements.
Okay.
That's correct.
That was my, my.
I will, I will make sure that the stipulation provides for that with the county.
And then the other one is, is the people, because that association is defunct, I think there's 13 owners in there, something like that. What are they going to see, especially the one, because the fire department's on one side, it's going to be obviously impacted. And then I think a guy named Sam Sorelli owns the other one and he's running it to Denny Grimes. What impacts do these property owners have?
I don't know. And probably that's up to the county to make that determination and over the property owners. It's really not a district issue.
Now, the reason I ask is because they're going to be calling us, say, why'd you approve it if you don't, didn't know what the ramifications against us are?
Well, recognizing this.
I guess they don't have to have our approval, what they're doing in eminent domains.
Right. The only reason, the reason, the basis upon which you can allege and challenge an eminent domain proceeding is a lack of authority, lack of valid public purpose. There's some other criteria in the statute and note, I don't know if the district's in a position to argue or contest that, quite frankly. The district's interest only is only, and whatever interest the district has in the property and the interest we have is either easements or the liens. And to the extent the eminent domain just acquires title gets vested in the county. But I'll make sure that the stipulation addresses the fact that the easements we have are not affected at all in remain.
Is this, are they making this claim in that the ingress egress off of the roundabout necessitates having this property?
I don't know. I didn't think it was appropriate to spend the time and money to go back and look at the county blue sheets and resolutions and what they needed for it. Again, we're not the owner. We just have that lien plus whatever utility is.
And their contact is going to be with whom since it doesn't exist?
Well, they've already, no, they've contacted in the past that person that we've been dealing with. Yes. And probably no affirmative response similar to what we received. And I mentioned that to Jennifer. I said, we've tried years ago.
Does he listen on the street from here?
I said, we tried years ago to get them to, well, and yeah, and again, as to what happens with the money afterwards, that's, county needs to sort that out. Money goes to registry of the court and maybe a lot of owners will fight about it to get a pro-rata share.
Are those utilities easements that are showing on there, are those, those are consistent with what was there before? There's not going to be any, any change in that, I take it?
I don't know. They'd be the fee simple owner.
Okay. The black line is exempt of the utilities, so I'm assuming that it was there before.
Yeah, the black line, the black lines with the proposing to acquire. So are you, is that there?
In a word, what do we, what do you want us to do?
Yeah, approve entering into a stipulation.
Do you do a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Stipulated final judgment, as I've mentioned.
I'll second that motion.
Any others discussion? Bill, did you understand all this?
I'm good.
All in favor say aye.
As I register.
Aye.
With also the caveat to make sure no impact on district. Thank you. Uh, I, I think I heard four ayes. Okay. Well, one other item not on here that I appreciate the board's approval of that. And I worked with Jennifer and again, there, she's a professionally a pleasure to work with. I've never met her before, but very nice. The, with regard to the four line litigation, we've had some discussions with the four line council going back and forth on the proposed stipulation we talked about for a pre-suit five five eight process. Letters, letters, red lines, red lines, back and forth to the point where he said, let's have a phone call. It was getting to that point. So we had about a forty minute phone call this morning with her. There might be an opportunity for some further positive discussions. And so I'd like to have another closed door session next week with the board for no more than one hour to talk about that as part of some settlement discussion.
Next week?
How long will it be available?
When's the next?
Our meeting is two weeks from today.
Right.
He's talking about next week. Continuation of this week.
Just trying to do it earlier, but.
Okay, I'm all right with that. I just want to make sure.
Are we going to have a quorum though? That's the problem.
We'd have to know Doug's going to have to be here.
If Doug can be here, then we will because Flavia will be gone and Mr. Guy won't be here.
How long are you going for, Flavia?
Thirty days.
If worse comes to worse, I.
You can see that over and over. Thirty days.
Or, or the other one is, is we go to where Flavia is at.
I mean.
Let's, let's constantly go to road trip.
If, if the court case is an attorney general's opinion. Yeah, if the court's, if the court case is an attorney general's opinion, it said you can't do that.
Okay, well then we, we'll go on ahead then.
At the end of this meeting, continue it to a date and time certain next week.
Okay.
Preferably the latter part of the week, I think that works.
Okay. And it's only a one hour meeting. I'll let Laura contact Mr. Guy, I can break him.
Yep.
We won't talk, we won't talk business, but I'll break into the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So that'll be the end of this meeting. Laura, if you can make a little note to, as opposed to a German to, to continue the meeting.
Any, anything else, Tony?
Uh, no, sir, unless there are questions from the board.
I've, I've got one item. We're prepping for the budget. And last year we introduced the new assessment methodology and that we're having some changes to the footprint of Gateway. Do we need to be having Russ look at that to, to see what impact that will have on our assessment methodology? We know that it's always moving.
Well, and now, now that you bring that up, I was going to bring it up later anyway, because Pelican definitely needs to have it revised. We have benefited from the additional dwellings that have been finished in Casella. And there is an impact minor, but there's going to be an impact with the C five community that's now underway, under construction. So now that they're planted, that can be a beneficial item for Pelican Preserve residents to reduce their assessments.
Yeah, I think Russ said that the true up mechanism is in there and every year you go through that process of analyzing the uses. So I think Laura, it's possible. Yeah, and have, have Russ here at the next, when's the first budget workshop? Are we having one?
Uh, the high watermark is, we're, is due by June fifteenth. The board set a date of June second to do, to approve the high watermark. I think it's ambitious, but that was what you guys said. So we have two meetings before, or one meeting before that day.
Oh, absolutely, I agree.
Yeah, we need to reengage him to update it.
I would suggest contact him sooner than later.
I'll call him tomorrow.
He's been invited to the Snoopy Hockey Tournament this year, which is, seriously, it's a, it's a world renowned hockey tournament. Charles Schultz, I guess, started years ago, called it the Snoopy Tournament.
Okay. He, he doesn't come for free, so is the discretionary money to engage him for this within the district manager's purview? I think it would be, I can imagine it's going to be ten thousand.
I think it's, I think it's really a monetary amount. Yeah, I think it's well.
Yes, it'd be well.
Personal services. Yeah. I mean, something we have to do.
Absolutely.
You'd like him to be either in person or online for the nineteenth meeting?
Also, we want to do is make sure that he is aware that there have been changes made to the nature of the community that would change the ERU or EAU or whatever you call it, account on the number of benefiting users.
And in my discussion with him last week and told him about these changes, he suggested that. I bring it up today and we get approval to update it. So it's appropriate.
And I would not have been surprised if Russ had it on his calendar to contact Laura to ask if they want to do that because that's just kind of, just kind of person he is, so.
Yeah, and I did tell him I was going to bring it up today, so he knew that.
I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Board, anything else for, for Tony at this point? I'm sure that we'll have some questions on the issue when we get to item three C or whatever the number was relative to the.
And has there been any change? Has there been any change, Tony, with the discussions with South Florida relative to boardwalk?
I've not heard of any. In the last couple, we said team, I think our, the district staff needs, teammates get back together and talk about that.
Okay, but they didn't challenge the minutes that Stephen put out?
I didn't see anything, no.
So we'll have to assume that without them commenting, they must have agreed with at least that part of it.
Yep.
I think we all got a copy of a letter from a resident about the details of a, the shape and size of a, of a human being in a golf cart on that, on that path. I, I gathered that some are maybe misconceived as the fact that this isn't something that we came up with, it's South Florida Water Management District. And I'm wondering, is that word spread around Pelican Reserve that would allow this to even come up as an issue? Because it sounded like me.
I got the same letter you did. I got the same letter you did. And I think that right now it's kind of an imbalance. Is that, would that be correct, Bill?
Yeah.
We're waiting, see where it goes.
And I hear.
P PAC is going to have a discussion at their meeting next week and then we'll have something to bring forward at the meeting on the nineteenth to the board from P PAC regarding that.
And, and one of the questions for P PAC will be, is it worth expending money to do the two things that South Florida said they wanted to do? One was the environmental study and then there was a second one and the name escapes me. And, and if we can fund those through the remaining balance of the bond fund, do they want to move forward? I don't know the answer to that, but that'll be at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think the two items were to engage in necessary consultants to determine any secondary impacts resulting from utilization of carts or the motorized vehicles on there. And secondly, I think it was.
ADA.
Eight, they, they talked about some safety issues, but I don't know if that's really their issue generally.
Because South Florida wasn't interested in discussing ADA at all. This, this wouldn't even enter.
And I haven't, we, we're continuing our research on that, looking for other boardwalks and other situations where the ADA was utilized as a.
So it's TBD. It's TBD.
Right, there's a way to tell South Florida, listen, you know.
And P PAC will take the lead on it.
Has, has either P PAC or the HOA over there put out any type of a blast email getting residents up to speed on this?
Yeah, Tony gave them language. We haven't said any, anything other than the language.
Cause I, I gathered that the person that sent this email wasn't up to speed on what had happened.
Has there been any further communications, Phil, on this? I mean, other than explaining what the restriction is?
If it's like our email, half of them don't read it. Phil Meece, P PAC, Tony has allowed us to put out two.
Not allowed.
Notices to the community so that people would understand. Frankly, the notices are pretty short, didn't give a lot of information, but just said that we're working on the process. And, and, and we've gotten that out to the community, whether this person wrote the letter, I haven't seen.
It was Bob Murray, but I don't know what was behind.
Yeah.
The letter, I don't know what generated him to do that.
I, I think what he was trying to do is just show the physics of the, the deal and the geometry of how a golf cart and a, a human could be on the path at the same time.
Yeah.
Do what?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if, if anybody's going to speak.
Okay.
For Mr. Guy to hear and everybody else.
Okay. Uh, Bill, I thought I heard you trying to get in. Did you have something?
No.
Okay, sorry. Moving on, Steve, are you online?
Are you talking to me?
He's muted, I see him there, but.
Steve? Fred, are you pitch hitting for Steve? He's doing this, his schedule? Okay. Do you see him on there?
I can't.
Yeah, he's at the upper right, but he's muted.
Where?
AS, I assume that's Gavin Stephen.
Nope.
Oh, excuse me.
I, there, anybody who's muted on here with the exception of Doug Xander muted themselves.
Let's, let's skip and we'll just go to district manager and come back when Stephen.
Well, I would like to give Fred, he has, part of that review is, is him, the engineer's report, that's Fred. And he's here, the three and tenure, unless you want to skip that. But that's Fred, that's not Stephen.
Stephen, Stephen was.
Fred's right here.
Okay, but I mean, Stephen was only doing the schedule.
Oh.
That the only thing he had on his part?
To the best of my knowledge, yeah, I, I talked to him today and he didn't have anything else besides the schedule, but Fred is here, so we can go to the second item. Or if you'd like to review.
Fred's here for the validation.
Yeah, if you'd like to review the schedule, I can take notes and we follow up with Tetra Tech the Monday after the board meeting and I can bring up questions then. It's your, it's your decision.
But Brett, you want to go on ahead, Fred, and do your, you mean on Stephen's part?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll just do that next time.
Okay.
Fred, go on ahead.
Is this long?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good afternoon. Fred Middle, Tetra Tech. I'm here to entertain any comments and questions you may have and give a brief overview regarding the ten year engineer's report for the bond validation capital works improvements. And also we have a three year capital improvements plan that would be used to, for the first bond series issuance. So once we validate it, settle on a ten year validation, it'll be validated and then we can borrow against it. The district.
For clarification, the intent is to validate with the maximum amount of money for a payment over a twenty year period. But the contract will all be in place in the three or ten year. They're trying to make sure that the twenty years is not forgotten.
So the documents that we prepared, or you all prepared, we modified and added, this is the, the bottom line of the, the ten year, the sixty million?
Yes, and I think we'll want to point out one item that was added that you hadn't seen before. You've seen it in other forms and that, that would be item three point eight, Lake Bank Restoration.
The ten year or the three year?
I'm looking at the ten year. The ten year is most important to, to reach agreement on because that'll set the stage for the bond council and the financiers to run their numbers. So they're really waiting on a final number on the ten year, which sets the upper limit of, of borrowing. But it's not a commitment, but it sets a total amount that you could borrow up to over that ten year period.
And that number is just a blanket thirty million dollar number?
So pointing you to the Lake Bank Restoration, we added this kind of late this week. That's a thirty million dollar number. It's speculative, it's for possible futures.
So if.
Lake Bank, if you don't go SRF, say.
Okay.
And if it's needed, I mean, we don't know if it's going to be needed.
So if we would continue with SRF on the route we've been going for the last six, seven years.
Correct.
Then this would not.
Come into play.
Wouldn't come into play.
Right, you wouldn't.
No, I guess for, for clarification, if you recall, we validated up to twenty million dollars in borrowings back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen for the Lake Bank Restoration project.
SRF.
And, no, borrowings. We, we did it as borrowings, so we could do loans, notes, bonds, any form of borrowing. The emphasis for it was the SRF loan. Because of twenty year maturity, we had to validate. So there was X number of dollars and, and loans have already been taken out. So that ten, that twenty million dollars that was validated already, where are we up to Laura so far?
Eight or nine million.
Sorry, I was talking to Stephen.
How far are we up to as far as how much has been borrowed so far?
Yes, I see SRF.
Eight million?
Would be three billion plus eight, that might be eleven.
It's about, I think it's ten, I didn't have.
Okay, so, so for a second discussion, then there's ten million dollars left of that, of, of borrowings that have been validated. So I guess the question is of the thirty million dollars, does that include any of the projects that were part of the, the validation that happened back in seventeen eighteen?
No.
This is on top of that?
This would be, and, and like I said, it's speculative. So no, it, it would be, there are potential that, no, those lakes are not included in this calculation.
Okay.
Because they're done.
Yes, they've been planned for elsewhere.
So these are additional lakes, additional ponds. They're, they're not the ponds and lakes that were part of that first validation.
Yes, and those three phases, those are not included in this list.
Okay, yeah, and if our original projections hold, that twenty million probably will be close to the, the number. But I don't know what prices are going to do either.
Yeah, we don't know yet, but this is just a kind of a, it, it's the money, you, you know, you know what the validation's for. It's, it's to set a potential.
There's no reason not to get.
Yeah.
To validate it.
Right, to validate.
It's, it's when it comes down to we use it.
So we will be seeking direction hopefully today on whether we should include the thirty million in that ten year validation. But also I want to point out, we, we realized that after discussions yesterday with other people involved, you know, the financial folks, the bond council, that we, we put in the three year a portion of that thirty million, which we, we proposed to remove from there because we won't need it in three years.
Well, when we pick a number, we're not picking a number that's assigned to a item or activity. Is that?
For all.
That's just a lump sum number.
No, typically what the engineer's report would say, we have these capital projects we want to engage in. Lake Bank Restoration, eight thousand six hundred and fifty-four linear feet of Lake Bank estimated, engineer's opinion of probable cost is X dollars done in forfeit. I'm just, yeah, over a period of time. Total estimated cost is X contingency factor twenty percent, X plus equals that capital amount, next capital amount, landscaping, then do that. So then we get the grand total. And the estimate is, we've estimated to do it over ten years. Again, the validation is to have borrowings with, with up to twenty years each of our amortization. So the projects may be done in three years, may be done in five years, may be done in ten years, but the borrowing for those who have a twenty year payback. Because it'd be a series, just like we always do. The monies are not doing owing until we actually borrow. We, we validate the high number, we may or may not ever hit that high number, but you don't want to have to go back and validate it again.
Do we have to have any type of a public meeting or anything like that for this?
Oh, absolutely. What you're going, what you will be doing, once you, once we agree upon it, we'll come back with the engineer's report that we recommend to the board. And then Russ Wire will do his assessment methodology report, a master report and a supplemental report. The master report will be based upon the overall capital improvement program. The supplemental will be based on the first phase, I'll call it, the first, which is a three year program. And that will then indicate what the debt service will be per person with all the various assumptions that are made about interest costs, you know, collection costs, the usual, like we did for the SRF, like we did for the other borrowings and any other debt service.
So, so other things have to be done first before we get to that?
Well, and yeah, we're hoping, I can't recall the last timeline, Laura, that Rhonda had. Because again, then once we get, what happens is once the board adopts, agrees to engage in the projects, the board adopts the engineer's report, the board adopts the assessment methodology, the board then also at that time adopts the engineer's report and adopts the assessment methodology, schedules the public hearing, which is usually forty-five days out, because that gives enough time to do two things. One, get the ad in the paper that they add with the map and then send individual mail notices to the property owners. And then those resolutions will also authorize the filing of the bond validation complaint. And that, that gets that ball rolled. And the timing of the bond validation complaint is contingent upon the court's availability. Assume we get to a final judgment, let's just pick a date, August thirty first. There's a thirty day window we have to wait to get an appeal. That runs, then you can issue the borrowings or bonds.
Any, any actions we need to do at this point?
No, I guess it's not final yet.
Repeat that back in.
Laura, what are we looking for as far as direction?
Couple of months, we'll get to it.
Uh, I guess the, at this point is just to make sure that there isn't anything that you see that was missing from these reports. And then we're looking to, did you really, does this three year include the lake banks on them?
The three years, well, in, in, in the draft that they have, it is included in there.
And then to remove the Lake Bank Restoration from the three year plan, because I don't realistically see that we would be outside the SRF loans by that point. And just keep it in the ten year, also the overall plan, but remove it from the three year plan.
And you verified that all the items that we had on that last checklist are inclusive in this?
Yes. And I even added one.
So if I may add, what we told the folks that are going to run the numbers, that by tomorrow, we could be on the phone with them, telling them, go with these numbers.
Yeah, we wanted that, we wanted the numbers frozen today so we could give them to go ahead or tomorrow to start crunching.
Do we need just?
Take a motion?
No, no. Do it?
Yes, we need finalized report, you're not approving it, just finalize engineers' report, then what will happen, we'll come back, again, Laura, I don't have the schedule in front of me, what do we come back at? The next meeting with the initial, some initial resolutions and start the process, or wait until the first meeting in June?
You just, you just need a week and a night from us to do your next.
To use these numbers, which totals 60.
Projects.
Numbers and projects, yes, to approve, yes.
Any questions on that?
Move forward, sounds good.
Yeah, move forward.
Thank you.
Steven, you here yet?
Hey, hey, good afternoon, everyone, this is Steven Adapty with Tetra Tech, can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah, we got you. We just had Fred go backwards and take you along.
Yeah, I was listening, I was stuck in mute land, sorry about that. So, I sent in our task authorization, task update. The only update that I really have are on the Lake Bank Restoration project. I'm sure you all noticed the record amount of rainfall that we had last weekend. The plan was to start on Lake 58 in Stony Brook, the big lake, this, this week. But with all of that rainfall, contractor and, you know, us and staff decided that'd be best to pull away from that lake so they didn't get caught on it while the water was rising. Because that lake is too big to pump down, so they're going to shift their focus to the smaller lakes as the rainy season starts and just start knocking those out. So, next week, they're going to start at 117 by the driving range. And then the next week, they'll start on Lake 79 by Daniel's Preserve. So, that's the, the current plan right now, and then they'll just continue on with the, the rest of the lakes. And Lake 58 will probably get to after the afternoon rainstorm stop.
117 came up about two feet in the last six days.
Yeah.
Are they going to have to go in and isolate it and pump it down?
They will, and they've, they've accounted for pumping in their bid, so they're, they've done it in the past on, you know, many, many lakes. So, they prepared for that, and it, that's all part of their cost.
And our reason that we lost 30 days was?
Um, we lost 30 days, we were waiting for a Lee County permit, that took longer than it should have. They had a bunch of tiny comments that really didn't make any difference. It was just kind of going back and forth with the county on that, but we're here now, so. We weren't expecting the rainy season to start and, you know, this soon, so.
By hold on a South Florida or a Lee County permit?
I'm sorry, what was that, Ed?
Yes.
The delay was due to a Lee County permit?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so I can, I can have all the complaining neighbors in my neighborhood call Cecil, not me. Okay.
There you go.
Anything else, Steven?
That's all for me.
Steve, one question, this is Bob. On item 2006, the rear adjustment for Pond 38 in Pelican, any hiccups?
Yes, sir. Uh, no hiccups. We're still trying to fine tune the model and get all the data collected and, and get that squared away. Talked to our stormwater group earlier this week, and they said they're getting pretty close, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I'll have something to, to deliver to y'all.
Well, the action date of 518, is there, is that going to trigger something?
Um, I'm hoping to have, to have Pond 38 to a point where I can have staff review it by 518. So, that's kind of just an internal milestone to have something delivered.
Okay, and 2208, the street lighting, Pelican Reserve Boulevard and Cypress Grove, it says that.
That one, we, we sent in the, we, we sent in the report. We just got a request to look at some pedestrian lighting that would be added in, in the median, like kind of at that bull nose near the pedestrian crossing across Pelican Reserve Boulevard to Cypress Grove. So, we're looking at that, but that task is going to wrap up here pretty quickly.
And that's going to result in a bid package, I hope?
Uh, no, we, we made a recommendation in the report that I think you have seen already. If not, I'll make sure I get you another copy. But we, we pretty much made a recommendation on how many lights to add and then our estimated cost. So, there still needs to be some design work done on, before it goes out to bid. In our services, we didn't have a, any scope to go look at the existing electrical power, you know, system for that area. So, that needs to be looked at to make sure that additional lighting can be added to the existing system.
Okay, it's just, it's moving glacially and it's a safety and security concern. So, whatever you need, if Pelican is the holdup or the advisory committee, just let us know because we want this to move forward.
Okay, yeah, I mean, go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I had another issue, go ahead and respond to Bob, what you had, what you were going to say.
Yeah, so if, if you take the report as is, the next step would be to have us or someone else go ahead and design the proposed lighting system, if that's what you want. That's number one, and then number two was, we were asked to look at adding these pedestrian lightings, which weren't in our proposed improvements, but that's not saying that they wouldn't help the situation. So, we're looking at those now. So, I, I think we just need to hold off and wait and see what the results are of adding that pedestrian lighting that was requested last week and see what that looks like. And then if everyone's happy with that, then the next step would be to go ahead and design it and then put that out to bid.
Yeah, the pedestrian lighting is new to me, did that come out of P-PAC or safety and security, or where'd that come from?
Um.
I'm wondering, so I don't know where the request came from.
I want to say Phil Meezy was maybe involved.
I don't think it's a bad idea, it's just that, it's the first time I'm hearing it.
Uh, Phil Meezy, P-PAC, I don't recall, but I will admit my memory is not very good, I do not recall us requesting this pedestrian.
It was, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the email right now. It looks like Dean Groves and Randy Bottleson and Bob Gepper was copied.
Yeah, those would be the people.
They're the appropriate people, okay.
Okay. Yep, so we're working with them to just check another lighting option.
All right, thank you.
Steven, we had a, an event occurred last week, doing these point repairs that were going around. We pretty much had a catastrophic failure over on 125, El, Pond 125. Everything that was done is basically washed away. I, I'm concerned that some of these point repairs, we're trying to shortcut and not doing and following what we have done on the pond banks regularly, where we go up, cut the trench at the top, fold the fabric over, protect it, and all the other good things. And what we did is we just lost two banks pretty bad, it was catastrophic. It looked like a California landslide. It went into the water, and so we're going to get to do it again. My concern is, we go back and do it the way we did it the first time, we're going to get to see it happen another time. So, I'm wondering if we need to maybe reexamine the method of our point repairs of just, I know we're trying to save some money, but doing it twice doesn't save money. So, have you been out there and have you seen them?
No, I heard about it, I'd be happy to go out there and look at it, I know every situation's a little different, so I'm not really sure the circumstances of this one, but.
Yeah, I.
There could have been a couple of reasons why it failed, I don't know if they sodded it, but, you know, maybe the sod didn't get a chance to take root and really anchor in what they put in, and maybe that was part of it. But I'd be happy to go out there next week and take a look with El and the contractor.
Give an opinion, we've done this in other places, and if it is an issue of the sod rooting, then that could very easily, if other places have been successful.
Put bins.
Do what?
Bend the sod.
That might, well, this, this was a pretty substantial failure, so the sod and the dirt went with it.
It was bad.
Okay. So. Yes, El.
Good afternoon, El Harris, Stormwater for Gateway Services. Yeah, they, they kind of fell apart out there, I went out and looked, I spoke with the residents out there as well. They did sod them, no, the sod didn't have a chance to take in, they did it one week, the next week it start, we got six inches of rain. Now, they did trench it in at the top, it was not trenched in at the bottom, there was no stone put on it. So, possibly going forward, and no one has said anything about charging us double to go out and fix their repairs. No one's mentioned any more money to be owed to Matt Tower for making the repairs safe again, okay? So, we're not paying double for that. I just want you to understand that, that, that nothing like that has come up.
They said they would take care of it.
He said he would take care of it. No, the side, one side of the pond, evidently it was getting watered, that sod was starting to turn green, the sod on the left side or the west side of the pond, the whole square, every piece of sod they put down there was completely brown, it was not getting any water from the lawn or wherever the water had came from before. Maybe the irrigation had been capped when this big washout occurred, but that washout was huge, huge. But yes, the contractor has said they will go make good, so, just, and I did talk to the residents, I did go out and take pictures. I walked the entire lake.
I just have one question, so the area that I saw that is, that is all dry, is that common ground or that's the residence, behind the residence zone?
They're behind, both sides of the lake were behind residence zone in the, in the LME.
And the other side of that, and if Steven is coming out, they might want to, you know, kind of take a survey of that pond bank because it is nowhere near a 4-1 slope. That slope is very, very steep, it hurts your ankles to walk down the pond bank, it is so steep.
So, so then back to.
Comes out and does this.
Yeah, so back to my question, have we reached out to the homeowner to ensure the irrigation, it's working properly when we do replace the sod? Because I mean, this is very similar to what happened to 83, this, from the repair failing to everything else, because they may want to do that.
And it's a different contract.
Yeah, so they may want to do that now, the pins did work, but we did also have rocks at the bottom, so.
83 looks like a pool table compared to this, it's got a big slope.
Yeah, oh, I saw it, so, so I just, I just want to reach out to the resident and, and see if irrigation is working prior to us putting the sod, whatever one that.
If you put the sod in and don't irrigate it, you're looking for disaster.
There's one other thing that we, he is going to also try, while we are there repairing the repairs, we're going to put in some soap, fencing up at the top, not trench it into their lawn, because we don't want to cut into their lawn. But we'll put some soil on it to hold it in so that if we get some heavy rains, at least it'll help deflect it somewhat, so.
I'm afraid with the nature of that material up there, if you go back in and try to put in anything other than a good selected fill granular material, you're going to have it happen again. It's going to wash, the clubs had a couple of them, and I saw them taking sand down there that looks like what they use in a bunker, and I thought, don't even try it, it ain't going to hold.
That's what we put on, if you remember, 106, 107 and 108 back in 2015, and the first rain, it was gone.
It's gone.
So, we just had exposed TRM. That's another thing we might do, is use this TRM that's sitting here in the yard out here that we're not going to be able to use on a pond bank.
That might be another deal too, okay.
And maybe go ahead and look at stones.
Look, look at it, Steve, when you're out here and have the opportunity, I'd like to hear what your thoughts are.
Yes, sir. All right, um, thank you all, have a good night.
Anything else for Steve? How you doing? Move on, I think that ends, Fred, you're, you satisfied?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Fred.
Thanks, Brad. District manager.
All right, I have short update, Leslie is all set for the AWW conference, she did get all her booking done this week. We have our new towing signs, I had mentioned last week, or last meeting that I was going to be signing the contracts for the towing, so we do have a new towing company. The police, the sheriff's department was out one night, gave nine or 10 warnings and took pictures of plates, and they were told if they were parked out there again, they would be towed and ticketed. So, we're all good to go there.
Who's our company, the new one?
Acme Towing.
Acme?
Yeah, like Roadrunner and Coyote, yeah. They've been really good, we've used them for other things and they've been very responsive.
And they have a site within the mileage requirement?
Yeah, yeah, they're, everything, all the requirements are met.
Because our, we're having troubles with ours.
That's why we had to get a new one.
Another nights they don't, and it's really irritating owners that one parks out on the street, gets towed, and then the next night, another guy is on the street and gets away with it, they're not happy.
Sure, I, I signed three separate contracts because we have signs here, at the pool and at the fun park, so I had to do three different agreements with them for those three different areas.
I'll get a phone number from you, do I need to talk to Wiley Coyote, or who do I talk to over there?
Well, I wanted to mention that Mr. Banks is online too, he came on about 20 minutes ago.
Can we continue with?
We need a two-minute break?
Do we need a two-minute break since Bob had two? That's what I thought. We'll have a short two-minute break still.
Two-minute break.
I think it's called practice. Will there be one? Towing from the fun park?
I think mainly it's over here, the issue.
Yeah, we can't talk until he gets back. Okay. What, people parking over there that shouldn't be? Yes.
Yeah.
I only go to the top of the lot dogs, and three of them, so, no.
Wait, wait.
Oh, they're.
Really?
Yeah, because there's like.
Well, we're back in, back in session, we're back in session. Last where is that?
Oh, me, my update, I'm in the middle of it.
Laura's update.
Um, we received the 60% design plans from the county for the fountain for the roundabout. Kenny and I gave feedback on that, I also had Jim Kennedy take a look because they had landscaping in it. We gave them comments and they are reviewing the comments, and I guess we'll comment on our comments. I have a meeting next Friday with someone from Microsoft to discuss moving forward with the Microsoft accounting package, I have the preliminary quote, it will be in my, as a capital request for next year's budget. Came in at about $59,000, $59,000, so I'm asking for a little cushion, but that will allow us to have all of our accounting here. What will happen is Infomark will log into our stuff, I can run reports, statements, anything whenever I want, we'll be able to print our own checks, everything will be here. So, if for some reason we have a fallout with Infomark, we can have, we can just give the, log into someone else and they can just log in and take over. So, that does start to pull some of that back in.
But at this point in time, we're not going to be doing any of their assigned contractual services.
Correct. Yeah, this, I won't be able to start until October 1st anyway, because of the budget. The preliminary budget is 98% together, I'll be finishing it up either tomorrow, I'll have it either to Steven by the end of the day tomorrow or by noon on Monday, so he can put something together to present to you, and we'll for sure have it on the meeting on the 19th, so you'll be able to see that. And then a final thing, this is just more of a FYI for something that'll be coming at the meeting on the 19th. Chelsea has a relationship with ACOM, it's A-E-C-O-M, they've done some work down at the beach, they're CEI, they do the construction engineering inspection. To have someone come in, in a contractual position, like what we have with Scott Connell, just on a temporary basis until we can, so she figures out what she wants to do with that role. So, that'll be presented at the next meeting, we do have a candidate. Kenny and Al and I, and Chelsea met with him on Tuesday, his name is Mark Roth, Roethsberger, or Rothenberger, sorry. And the goal is for him to start on June 1st, so we'll have more information, the formal approval and everything.
Public Works position.
It would not be an employee, this would be a contract, outside contractor, like what Scott Connell was.
Yeah, and on that line, Laura, just a quick, yeah, Chelsea's asking me to look at that to see if we can piggyback it.
Yeah, oh, I had it in my notes, sorry, and we're going to piggyback on the county's contract.
I'm looking at that, I'll get back to her.
Yep. I missed that line, thank you.
No problem.
I had it written in my notes. That is everything on my update, I do have one thing that I need to just show. Every year, we have to submit this form that just shows how many registered voters we have in our, in our district. And we did work with Leslie to verify that that number was correct and reasonable, so.
And that's for information, and on May 12th, the notice should be running in the newspaper for the qualifying period.
Yes, and, yep, and you guys should be getting your notices for your annual financial filings, Mr. Guy actually did the legwork on this one. He said they'll be getting sent out May 25th, and they are due July 1st. And anyone who wants to run for office for the open positions this year will also need to fill that form out. But if memory serves, that is one of the items on the checklist when you. you apply to run for office, that's when the, it's on there, but-
Yeah, every June, you have to fill that form out.
Yeah, they'll be sending them out on the twenty-fifth of May.
Okay.
And except for the controversial item that we'll be discussing shortly, that is the end of my update. So, um, for the P-PAC O-N-M discussion, Mr. Meezy has asked if he could-
I got one question before we get to that.
Yes.
Uh, the open position for a public works manager.
Yes.
Have we slow walked interviews or anything, or is that?
We, at this time, Chelsea wants to hold on that till she has a chance to get here.
So we have them, okay, I'm fine.
Yeah, we, yep.
Okay.
I have some questions too, but-
Go ahead, what, on this subject or?
No, different subject for Laura.
Oh, okay.
Just clarification. So regarding, so Jim is leaving when?
The sixteenth.
And he'll be out for six weeks?
Four. I have four, yeah.
Uh, Jim.
Kennedy.
Jim, okay.
Yeah.
So you're gonna be taking over for him, or is-
He is providing a list of everything that he is working on, everything he has coming up. He and I will be going around and we're gonna divide and conquer. Um, having this person start May, June first will help too. We can have this, have, uh, Mark take some of the bigger, more of the project oriented side of the things Jim was working on. He can, he can oversee those, so we'll, we're gonna divide and conquer.
I, I just want us to be able to support him more because I know it was a shock to him when he got back, even though I was here at the meeting complaining about it.
I think, I had div, I had defined a, a weakness there, and there was, we didn't have a lot of good, uh, before he left, we didn't do a good job of documenting what he was all working on, which is what he and I are doing, we're work, we've already started that process now, so it's when he goes, I will know everything that he's working on, everything that's on his radar, so there won't be any surprises when he gets back.
Is he ill or?
No, he, he goes on vacation.
He just left and came back, he's leaving again, and that's my second question.
This was planned in advance.
So we have no caps, like, like, because I'm like when Chris was here, like, it was two weeks, like, we have no caps for employees.
There's nothing in the handbook that says, no.
So it takes approval from you?
Normally, nobody has ever taken off more than two weeks.
Okay.
Hotel California.
But he, but he does require management approval, whoever he's reports to.
It's on, yeah, it's not all paid because he doesn't have enough PTO, it is unpaid. He requested a leave, basically.
And, and what?
And I didn't know, when, at the time when it was-
So maybe that leave, or is it, see, this is what I'm-
Please understand, please understand that at the time when this is approved, there were things that happened after that, that I didn't know he was gonna be gone for those other reasons when this was approved, so I didn't feel it was fair to penalize him for something he couldn't control.
And the dates are from when to when?
He's gone from the middle of, May to the middle of June, he's gone for four weeks, May sixteenth. So he'll, Chelsea's first day is the sixteenth, and that's his first day of PTO.
May or June?
The conversation here should be more around making sure that we've got coverage.
We do.
And, and that, and we have, um, you know, kind of, uh, you know, succession, not, not from exiting, but just, again, part of that coverage, and this goes back to, you know, stuff we've been talking about for the past two years, which we're, which we're getting in a better position for that. So, um, I don't have any problem with him taking the time off, as long as we have, we have everything covered and we feel confident.
I do, this time I do, yes. Yeah, we've, we started working on that last week already, so.
First I heard about it, I don't have a problem with it, I just didn't know it.
This is, all right.
Okay, uh, then we have my next item agenda, uh, is the P-PAC O-N-M discussion, so I have Mr. Meezy at the podium to bring up the, the item that's gonna be presented.
Phil Meezy, um, P-PAC, and I just wanted to kind of formally introduce this thing. Um, what you're considering today has already been, some of the background has already been provided by Rich and Bill. Um, I would say that both the Pelican Preserve Community Association and the P-PAC agree that whatever plan for administering landscaping in Pelican Preserve is established, it must be in the best interests of the Pelican Preserve community and should involve close collaboration between both organizations. That we agreed to. What we have had trouble with is coming up with the mechanism for doing that collaboration. Um, the motion that was passed by the P-PAC, five to zero, is the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee recommends to the GSCD Board of Supervisors that it approve removing landscaping and landscaping activities from the Community Development District Systems and Facilities Operation and Maintenance Agreement between the District and the Pelican Preserve Community Association. The change is to move responsibility for day-to-day landscaping operations and management of the CDD landscaping in Pelican Preserve from the association, that is the Pelican Preserve Community Association, to the P-PAC Landscape Work Group. The change will be effective as soon as practical. So both P-PAC and the Community Association have their own perspectives on this proposal. Um, as, as I said, both Rich and Bill have presented, uh, some of what, uh, they wanna talk about as far as the Community Association is concerned, and, and Bob Geppert is gonna present the, uh, reasons for this motion and, uh, why he feels, why, why the P-PAC feels it will be effective.
Okay. Can we have, do you have questions? Cause I, I wanna make sure that I understand-
I have two.
I'm sorry?
I have two, but you can go first.
Okay. Uh, I wanna make sure that I understand exactly what's going on, because this is uncommon to the rest of Gateway, with maybe the exception of Stony Brook. The rest of us, we do it, everything through our HOA. We do it through our HOA. As I understand what has been done at this point in time, is, is in an agreement that we had, that's long before me, an O-N-M agreement, I guess, between the District and the Association.
Right.
Not P-PAC, the Association, so. Called for the landscaping to be under the Association. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And the Association, uh, does not have a landscape committee of either board members and/or residents or both, like most communities have, but rather, they have in essence subcontracted all of the landscaping management and other duties out to the management company.
Castle, castle.
That's all, I'm correct so far?
Yep.
Okay. And that the Association Board is publicly elected.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And what is wanted to be done now is to take and have PPAC. Well, first of all, we'd have to amend the, uh-
Well, let me make the proposal, we've got.
Okay, I'm just trying to lay the groundwork.
And that's what I'm trying to do.
We're on the, all on the same page of what is gonna happen.
Good.
Such that then it will be, well, let me go back. The Association, how does the monies that are expended, we know, Bob, we, he's done this numerous times, and so you guys with PPAC, it comes in and it's on your OO2 account, and for as long as I've been here, and I've said it, as long as I will be here, what you guys do over there is, is your business, is your business. I don't feel that, I'm not living over there, I'm not doing it. If your residents go for it, then you do it, you do it, and we'll, we'll approve it, which means then it comes into our, our OO2 account, and then the, uh, what do you call it, the assessment, uh, a non-advalore tax, or non-advalore assessment, is then based on, on the results of that number.
Correct.
And it's pretty much a rubber stamp. It always has been a, a rubber stamp.
There's a slight aside that the way the payments are made, some of them are made out of the OO2 account and some of them are done by Castle, but basically-
Mike, where I'm getting to is obviously if right now it comes to us via P-PAC on a budget, that component of the budget was done by the Association, so there must be, shaking your head, no.
No.
How does the money and the dollar value that goes in our OO2 account get from the Association to P-PAC to us?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we table this item to the next meeting so that the supervisors can be briefed in writing on the, in writing on the details of this, uh, proposed change in arrangement.
Bill, can we hold on that till at least, while we got everybody in one room, get an idea of what's going on while we're all here?
I guess the first, the first question is, uh, the motion to table, is there a second to that motion, and that is a priority motion, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Guy? True, with no discussion.
I, I, I may get where you're at, but I'm not there yet. I don't, without a second- Lack of seconds, so we'll continue on. So my question is, how do, how do we as a board member, but it's, because we have a fiduciary responsibility and we have a bunch of other responsibilities as board members that we're agreeing to this. I wanna make sure that everything that we're doing and the way in which it was done is above the law. In other words, we're doing it the right way. Going out, not bidding, and I could think of a whole bunch of things that HOA sometimes do, uh, that ain't right. And I don't wanna take and approve a budget or put my name on a budget that we find out later was not, not correct.
Inappropriate.
Inappropriate. So that's why I'm asking, we know the PPAC comes in with a budget of which one of the components is landscaping.
Right.
Since they aren't involved in the landscaping, who sets the dollar value that comes over to them that comes to us? That's what, that's, I'm sorry?
It was done through a contract. We, we just bid the landscaping contract out, so there is a three-year contract in place that has set costs for that service.
But that, that's-
That's only part of-
Yeah.
That's only part of-
That's, that's, that's the problem I'm getting to, is to how this-
The crux of what you just asked is historically, Castle Management brings a budget for landscaping and security to P-PAC, and P-PAC puts that in, and that's been it. Historically, that's how it's-
So it comes to the P-PAC via Castle, which is representing the Association.
On behalf of the Association, that is right.
So would the group then come up with somewhat of a budget, bring it to you guys, this, and then you guys would either okay it and bring it to us?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the proposal.
Uh, no, I, I didn't get that, that was the, the deal. What I gathered was is that, under this proposal, the, that, that process is being transferred from the Association via an amendment to the contract to be done by PPAC directly.
Well, amendment to the O-N-M.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Amendment to the O-N-M.
And the fundamental issue is, uh, has obviously been the money. It cost the residents, um, ninety-three thousand, two hundred dollars a year to remunerate Castle for those services. So what P-PAC said with that understanding, model, excuse me, someone else talking-
The fortune of that is landscaping.
Okay.
Some of that's landscaping, some of it's, uh, access control.
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is, is that we have the board's discussion, we have Mr. Meezy up and out, and if the board wants to entertain any other comments, any amendments, the public that they, the protocol be a, the chair can allow that and have them approach the mic, but as opposed to having a-
Okay.
Well, I just have one-
So, so, well, let me walk through this.
Okay, let me just, I got one last question. What responsibilities, what knowledge, what professionalism does Castle Group have on landscaping? And the only reason I ask that, because I'm violating my own rule that I'm getting involved in Pelican Preserve deal, but since I'm putting my vote on it, I just gotta ask because I haven't seen a HOA management company that knows squat about landscaping, squat. So I'm concerned about that. I, I-
Okay.
Okay, that's what I mean.
So, so going back to the proposal, they're trying to avoid the ninety-three thousand dollar cost.
A portion of it.
Yeah.
A portion of, that is correct. But however, if this is successful this year, it with, uh, from a pro forma point of view, then it'll extend probably in the future to security, but right now we're talking landscaping. So with the landscaping portion and modeling the concept of the Pelican Preserve Work Group for ponds, ponds has done this successfully from day one to the benefit of our residents, and I've never really heard much criticism about it, so I'm gonna assume it's been successful. We're trying to model it over here. So within ponds, every dollar that is proposed by the work group or every observation runs through P-PAC to approve it. If P-PAC approves it, then we spend it. Ponds creates their own budget, subject to P-PAC approval. This would be the very same thing for the landscape. Landscaping will develop a budget before a bun, a dollar is spent, it goes through the, uh, P-PAC to buy into or to object. So it's modeled on exactly how we've done with ponds.
Okay.
So what we gain by this, at the present time, in the O-N-M, the District reimburses, uh, the Community Association that is ninety-three thousand by the O-N-M, they transfer that obligation. So, so the District is paying for it. It's a good deal for the residents because you don't, you know, you don't have to pay taxes and so on, that stuff. The opportunity is, if we disengage Castle from it, we don't need their services any longer, and it's managed by the work group over here, which will include the CDD assets of Jim Kennedy guiding the work group, plus the fact that the work group has-
That's what I-
-a degreed horticulturist, it has a former nursery owner, and these are enthusiastic volunteers, and they have jumped on this and they really want to better the community. Now, we also have a seat in the core group that has been assigned at the present time to Castle, but it's really to the PPCA. The Community Association is welcome to be on this board, the work group board, as a collaborative, uh, team effort. Uh, there's no reason to think that the work group would be any less inclined to the betterment of Pelican Preserve than what the Community Association would do. We're all trying to do the same common thing. We are in violent agreement on that part. It just comes down to whether P-PAC felt that to save that money, to save that management cost that goes to Castle, and take those funds, as they've said, and it's accurate, no one has proposed cutting the budget by this fifty thousand or whatever it is, but, but to funnel that money into the various work groups, security and or landscaping, to, uh, take on projects that they'd like to make the community better.
Right, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So when, I think Richard, right, when you mentioned about two, two hours weekly, is that in addition to what we already provide?
Well, because it's, it's a, uh, kind of a change, it's been a proposed change to bring Kennedy into the process, it's gonna take time for him to come.
Okay, so I would like to point out the fact that Pelican currently pays for zero percent of Jim's salary. There's no time, he is extremely stretched thin, and I don't know if we have the bandwidth at this time to dedicate two hours a week.
So that's why-
Well, that's something new, I hadn't heard of that before.
Yeah, so, so that, that's my concern. So the two weeks, I honestly, just going from other projects, I, I mean, I'm gonna have to kind of look at, uh, Stony Brook, right? Two hours a week, I think that's not really what you're gonna use, I think you're gonna use more than that, and I don't think we're gonna, we don't have that to support, we don't have that right now to support that, so that's my concern. And the second of all, it will be, in addition to paying Jim, would we be using other staff like Laura and so forth? Cause if, if you're gonna save the fifty grand, but you, you understand that you may spend some money on staff here because you're gonna have to pick up some of that work. We understand that the volunteers are gonna pick up the majority, but staff here is going to, it wouldn't be fair for us to pick up the bill, and we may not even have enough people to do it.
And the only way I can answer that is that the ponds work group has not imposed, and I asked Laura this, how much resources that the staff has devoted to our ponds group? And I don't think there's very much error.
No, but you're, it's a little different there, yeah.
You guys pretty much are, like, we look up to you guys.
Yeah.
You're very self-sufficient. And I think landscaping would not going to be.
Well, I expect with the expertise of the landscape work group that it will be a tolerance, honestly. We want Jim to do the sanity. We want to do Jim.
I mean, yeah.
Just to do, you know, the sanity check within what the group is doing to make sure they stay on the right track. But we're not looking for day-to-day minute-to-minute guidance. The other part of the gym came into this because we're only talking district assets. We're not talking any community association assets. But the question was raised, a legitimate question, if somebody has a problem in the middle of the night, who do we call? Well, obviously they'll be calling the chairman, which at this time is, is, uh, Joe Schofield. But other calls could be Castle to direct it like they direct work group calls now for Ponds or over here to the staff. So from that perspective, and I don't know how many calls we get in the middle of the night about a tree.
Yeah.
Or a place. But nevertheless, you have to have a perform on how to do it.
Okay, so, so I guess concerns me i- if we may not use as many, maybe just the two hours, but we may not even have an hour to give because he's stretched out so thin. And I'm telling, because I've been working with landscaping with him and sometimes I look at his list, Laura knows. And I'm like, yeah, there's twenty things, but here's thirty-five more. Because there is a lot. So that concerns me. I don't want to sell your community of, yes, they can do it. I'm not doubting the committee. I'm doubting how much help can we staff provide to you guys?
Yeah, I.
So that's my only, the only thing.
It's a legitimate call, yeah. Up to the back.
Mike, uh, Joe.
Joe Schofield with the PPAC Landscape Work Group. Jim is part of our group, so we have a connection and a contact with Gateway Services. And you have experience with public facilities. We have a great management team. We have professional managers who are on our group. We have professional landscapers who are, and, and horticulturists and nursery people that are on our group. We would only use Jim if there was some specific reason for doing that. He would be a connection if necessary, but he would not be required to participate in all of our meetings or come over and do things specifically in Pelican Preserve. He would be a resource that makes a connection if we need something. Jim and L both spent hours working on that new contract, which they proposed to PPAC that we needed to get a new contract to replace four old contracts, two of them about six years old. So we combined all that. They did yeoman work on that. They participated in it. They put it together. They put the bid package. They put the quote out. They reviewed the quotes. We reviewed the quotes. Our team did. And we made the recommendation, but they had already done all that work. So it's not that we haven't had a connection with Gateway. You guys have been involved with it. I'm not sure how that was all financed, but it was a gateway deal for us to.
The door there.
Yeah, well.
The open the door that I didn't want to hear.
Well, I, I, I didn't mean to open the door.
That was not supposed to be doing that.
But how that contract came about was through Gateway. And, and then we took over and we decided or made the recommendation to PPAC who made the recommendation to you to do it.
I, I thought, I, I'm just absolutely confused.
It is really no different than, really no different than vetting ponds.
But I mean, that would have been a function that I would have thought that the capital management would have done. If they're so knowledgeable, they would have.
Castle.
A cap, what, what's the name of it?
Castle.
Castle. I would have thought they would have done that. Why did they need our staff?
But the contract, the, the bidding process and that bid was done way before the landscaping work group was ever involved. In fact, when I was told about it, I had a chance to go for a ride through the community, but that was long in process before we were in. Anyhow, I just wanted to say that.
But the staffs is, the staff has been involved with helping the Ponds work group to the same extent that the landscape work group got staff help.
But Jim, Jim, Jim is just a resource.
Payment. See, that's my hiccup. It's without payment. Because I can tell you, L, I mean, I know for a few weeks I, I was trying to get ahold of her and I feel like every week it was working on that. So we're talking about a lot of hours. I won't speak behind for L, but L, if you want to come up and tell me how many, I mean, it was weeks of weeks. So I just don't want you to, the, the group think we're going to take fifty thousand, we're going to save here, but now you're going to pay forty-eight thousand. You may not even get the same service because we don't may not have a person to assist you. So that's, I just want to make sure that it's clear.
So I, I want you to be, I want you to be sure. We have the resources, the education and the people to do all the landscaping.
I have no doubt. That, that's not, that's the only thing.
We're not going to be.
That is the only thing that is not my concern. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that and I believe that and I'm, I'm.
Staff is not going to be taxed.
Yeah.
I mean, any more than maybe tax.
Well, like in our community, the way we do it, we entered into an agreement with a firm up in Sarasota, PSA Horticulture. And they come in, they prepare the, the contracts, our committee meets with them, they do all that. When we do the bid, they do the post-bid analysis, they do all of that. They do the pre-bid meeting, the, everything. I, I wouldn't turn it over to a line to do that if I could stand on my end and spit quarters. They don't know anything and I would be shocked at Castle.
But this work group has.
We would be in a position.
My point is if the work group knows it, then we don't need L and we don't need Jimmy.
That's probably true. That's probably true. We are very capable of handling all that and we have the resources and the knowledge to do it.
Well, I'm just trying to get around it. This is so uncommon to what all of the other HOAs do. We don't do it this way.
Could I request that if we're going to make a change and shift some of the responsibilities over where some of it may fall on the district, that we have a plan written up? Or like it is part of that proposal saying, you know, these responsibilities will be handled by the work group. These are the things we may need.
There are none, there are none other than consultation.
Okay, but I would like to know how many, how much time you think that that's going to be because that'll help us allocate the cost.
To what we ask for.
But, but we'll, well.
What is, what is staff's position on this? What is staff's position on, on, on this?
Look what.
He's trying.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, Doug, go ahead.
Yeah, wha- what is, what is staff's position on this?
I talked to Jim and he wants to help, but he does not have the bandwidth at this time for a consistent.
Okay.
And we are not paying, or you guys aren't, Pelican pays none of his salary. There's a five percent built in there for L for her time for some things she does with the Ponds group. There is no, none of Jim's time is currently being billed to Pelican. I have concerns of that.
Yeah, going back to what Bill said earlier, I think this needs more vetting. I think staff needs to take a look at it, come back with options. Um, if, if it comes down to being, needing to allocate, you know, uh, uh, you know, funds to, to cover resources, I think it's not as simple as just accepting the proposal. Uh, and I, and I'd like to do it, but I think it needs to be vetted a little bit more because there's still quite a few outstanding elements. And I think what I'm hearing, the theme is that staff and, you know, this is not a bad thing. But being able to accept it without all these details ironed out, I think is creating, you know, some hesitation. So can we table this until staff can maybe vet a little bit more and come back with, you know, maybe viable options? That would need to happen in order for us to be able to accept this?
Doug, what are we going to ask the two sides, for lack of a better term here? What are we going to ask them to do in the interim? Because it sounds to me the, like, both are somewhat fixed in their positions that they want to keep. Is that not true? Yeah, Doug, come up. Doug, we'll get right back to you on that.
Okay, sure. No problem.
Thank you. Bill, Bill Serrico again from Pelican Preserve. The community association is not fixed. As a matter of fact, we have had extensive conversations with Supervisor Geppert and with the chairman of the Pelican Reserve Advisory Committee. And we've offered, first of all, we've offered a financial concession. You want the fifty thousand dollars to go away? Pelican Preserve Community Association is ready to eat that. That's how much we, how strongly we feel about the fact that you cannot take the day-to-day operations. We're talking about daily, weekly, monthly operations of a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year governmental contract and placed in the hands of volunteers who may go on a six-week vacation like Mr. Kennedy is. That's number one. Number two, we've also offered an extensive role for the L W G, the kind of advisory role that we're used to from PPAC. If they want to help with long-term planning, if they want to help with, uh, planting selections, if they want to do all those hu- horticultural things that they are best prepared to do, we're happy to accept their help, their advice. We can even make it mandatory. What we're worried about is the day-to-day operation of landscape services. You asked earlier, what does Castle know about that? I made the point in my, uh, comments to you that we're not talking about horticultural here. We're talking about management. Castle is a management company. They know how to manage subcontractors. The L W G is not prepared to manage on a day-to-day basis these, uh, contractors. Now, a couple of questions were asked, may answer some of the questions that were asked. The first was where, where does the budget come from? The, the suggestion was the budget comes from the community association. It does not in totality. We do provide the information associated with the operational aspect of landscape because that's our role under the O N M contract. However, the long-term planning, the resources for reserves, uh, all of that is independently done by the PPAC. We have to say that. Okay. Do, are we compensated for the work of Castle? Yes, we are. Where he told you, we're willing to give that up if that's what it takes to get this disastrous concept off the table. The group will have to rely on district staff to do some things. They just don't have the bandwidth. We can point to at least two, uh, instances in the last three months where significant operations of landscape uh, maintenance have been delayed because the L W G doesn't have the bandwidth to handle it. We're talking about something much, much different than the Ponds group. Ponds group has done great work. Ponds group deals with independent operations of, of, uh, projects. They don't do day-to-day maintenance, not the, the term we're talking about here. They've got thirty volunteers. We've got a five or six-person core group with the L W G. Let's not make that comparison. It's really not fair. Pelican Preserve Community Association is elected by the representatives, the residents of our community to represent their interests. We are adamantly, adamantly opposed to this. We just ask you to table it. There's too many loose ends. There's too much damage that can be done. We're more than willing to continue in discussion, but we're not ready at this point to, to let this go forward because it's going to hurt our residents. But my point is, is if we have the two parties get back, the issue of the L W G, uh, e- existing is not, not on the table. We have, we have no objection to the L W G existing. We love the fact that they've come together and they brought the resources together that can help us make the community better. What we're talking about very, very simply is the one element of the plan that doesn't make sense to us. And that is taking the day-to-day management of landscape services out of the hands of the community and turning it over to a, a volunteer group of an unelected subcommittee of the district.
Has, has the group seen what, what it takes for the day-to-day operation? Have they reached out to, to Castle Group and looked at that information? See, this is what we're signing up for?
They have quite the opposite. They have interfered with our ability to, uh, conduct our, uh, obligations under the O N M contract by having independent meetings and directional meetings with subcontractors. I have no idea what they're doing and they don't share with us.
I'll ask a different question. Has Castle or, or the property or you guys, the, the HOA, reach out to them and say, look, this is what it takes? And here's the document. This is how much. Is this willing? So it kind of goes both ways.
We, no, we have. We actually have. A- and, uh, Mr. Geppart and, uh, Mr. Schofield are absolutely aware of the percentage of time of our hired staff that is, uh, applied to the management of these services. Uh, and that's where the ninety-three thousand dollar number came from. That also covers security and some other things. But of, of that, about fifty thousand dollars a year, and that's direct service time of three different individuals on our staff. Community manager, a, uh.
Your assistant.
Assistant community manager and a, uh, uh, maintenance person. So they know, they know what it takes.
If I may, uh.
I don't want to engage, I don't think engaging in debate is appropriate, but I've answered your questions, I believe.
To me, I would like to challenge your assertions.
There, there was.
Your, your.
One, one thing that was said earlier, and I definitely want to talk to the attorney on this, it was a statement that you'd made, Bill, about Bob being in, and I'm assuming you're referring to Bob, being in some of the meetings uh, and discussion, uh, with the, uh, PPAC on this issue. Uh, I wasn't aware that that was a illegality.
It's not.
No, so I just want to get that off the table. There's nothing illegal with.
We're, we're not suggesting that. We're suggesting that there was.
Certainly sound like it.
Uh, no, sir, it's not. It was not. They're two different boards, two different parties.
Well, and then the other one, Bill, is that where I have a real problem is is that you, you're talking about this dollar value, but we're looking at and we have experience with, not saying that they're apples and apples or apples and oranges. In fact, they could be apples and oranges. But we got almost three million dollars that's under PPAC on the ponds. And you talk about a, a place for an exposure, for a disaster to happen. It hasn't. It hasn't. So a- and, and, and to my knowledge, they're not getting any guidance other than with what our engineer works with them and his budget.
And tech.
So that's, that's why I don't really have a problem going the.
All I'm suggesting to you is it's completely different in character, sir. Completely different in character.
I'm aware of what they are. I just, I know in my community, I have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar contract and I don't have that. I don't want my management company to do it because they, they don't know anything about it. And I would be surprised if Castle does.
Okay, I, I have one question. When you say that the PPAC or the community association is willing to eat the cost of the fifty thousand, does eat the cost mean that that'll then become part of my assessments as a member of the community?
It means we're not going to ask the, uh, Gateway Community Services Development District to reimburse us.
It's not what I asked.
I have no idea. Are you willing to, are you willing to commit to reducing our ad valorem assessment? Uh, if you take this over and eliminate the ninety-three thousand dollars? It goes both ways, sir.
The answer is yes, that could happen.
It could, but you're not willing to commit to it, are you?
Please let me finish. If the PPAC decided that they didn't want to use the fifty-three thousand that we're paying Castle at the present time that you're paying them and just wanted to give that savings to the residents, then that would be there. It would be a reduction in cost. You're not offering any reduction in cost to the residents. You are offering a reduction here, but you're taking money out of left-hand pocket and putting it to right.
Excuse me, you did that.
I didn't interrupt you.
I, you're right.
The second thing is you're talking about the management, uh, that you're not talking about anything other than guiding the contractor. That's what Castle is doing is, is managing what the contractor does. And I would submit to you that that could be handled just as effectively by the work group. There's no need to have a middle party there. Castle has no particular expertise in this area anyway, whereas the work group has quite a bit of expertise to do it. So I would challenge some of your assertions.
Well, uh, let, let me just answer you if I may. First of all, let's talk about uh, whether or not there was any reduction in cost to either the, the residents or the district, uh, or expense to the residents or the district for the ninety-three thousand dollars. If you examine carefully the budget numbers from PPAC, you'll find that as soon as the ninety-three thousand dollar, uh, expense entry was entered in the first year of the agreement where it was allowable, they, uh, entered a contra-entry of a hundred thousand dollars uh, by reducing the number they were sending to reserves. So in effect, uh, you got a seven thousand dollar, a reduction in expenses to the residents and to the district when this whole transaction happened. In fairness, if you were to reverse those transactions, we all know how to do contra entries. We take the ninety-three thousand dollars out of PPAC budget, have to add back in the hundred thousand dollar entry for, uh, reserves and we'd end up with a seven thousand dollar hit to the community. That's number one.
Well, as.
There was a, there was a fund, there was a, there was a bit of, of budgetary ledger domain, which I spoke to in, uh, very briefly in my written remarks. Uh, in, in effect, the ninety-three thousand dollars is ephemeral. It doesn't exist. It's a number. It was just a transaction that took some money out of, off of our books and put it on your books because it seemed to be the right place to recognize as expensive. Right now out of the non-ad valorem, it's in our O O two account, correct? It's in your O O two account. That's correct. And it, it has factual basis. Is that correct? It does. It's a contract. It, it is an allocation of expenses of an existing contract. Yes. Okay, to Castle Group of which a part of its access control, part of its landscape. And, and some other things. There's a whole bunch of other stuff.
But to suggest that the hundred thousand dollars that PPAC chose to not put into reserves doesn't represent a savings is kind of bizarre.
What I'm trying to say is there's no expense there at all.
There is expense. So if they were, the year before, the year before, we didn't pay the ninety-three.
But you put a hundred thousand in reserves.
We put three, we put three hundred and fifty thousand. We put three hundred and fifty thousand in reserves. So when the ninety-three thousand came through, rather than passing that along to the residents as an increased cost, they elected to defer that for a year and use reserves.
It was actually two years. You've done it, you've done it. No, you've done it every year that the ninety-three thousand dollar charge was there. So.
Only the second year.
So let me just continue.
Chairman, in all due respect, this item is taking way longer than it should. It's, it's not vetted out and we need to table it. So I make the move to the table, this item to the next meeting and have staff vet it out and coordinate with PPAC and all, all parties.
Can I make?
Back to the motion to table.
Question for, for Phil. My, uh, Tony, is there anything in this discussion that we're doing that is we're doing wrong or we would be doing wrong if we do this?
Do you want to amend the contract?
Amend the contract, yes.
To, uh, to modify the contract, to remove certain services?
Motion to table is a preferential motion. It must be divided as soon as it's made in second.
A second.
I haven't, I haven't heard a second, Bill.
I seconded it.
Doug seconded, yes.
I think Doug made the motion and Bill seconded.
Bill, who, who made the motion?
I made the motion. Bill seconded.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
No. And it died. Uh, Tony, I'll go back. Is there, notwithstanding the issue of the money uh, that's not accounted for in our budget and staff time not available?
It is accounted for in our budget because it's part of the HOA, the O N M assessments that come in. So we are, it's.
Yeah, I just don't want that to be an issue. We can correct that. I just want to make sure that we've got it as an issue. The, I just want to make sure that there is nothing wrong that we're doing. We can do this. We can take and do it.
Yeah, the point, I, I guess the fundamental question is, and I, is that these are district assets, number one. It's district property. And the district has agreed in the past, has entered into this agreement with the association for the reasons outlined in the recital as to at that time when the agreement was entered into, what the board and the community association thought were the best interest of the community. And as time goes on, items may change. The parties may have a difference of opinion as to what might continue to be the best way to deliver the services or maintain the district assets. I think that's, it gets lost in all this, uh, conversation. It's not the community association's assets. It's the residents through the board, because the board owns those assets, that, that, uh, the district owns the assets. The ability to modify the agreement, to remove certain features is there, yes. Uh, or in the alternative, the agreement provides that the community association comes to the. Or in the alternative, the agreement provides that the community association comes to the board with a budget and the board can approve or disapprove or modify the budget, however choose. There's no, the board has great discretion in what they can do in the budget.
Okay. If we do that, then, if, if we table this, we table this, what's going to get accomplished in the two weeks to the next meeting?
Can I make a request? Can we have something, some kind of a plan, like a proposal? These are the duties that the work group is going to take on. These are going to be the expectations of staff. We have, I have nothing to present and it makes it really hard from a staff perspective for us to give feedback to you if I don't know what we're going to be expected to do.
We're not expecting you to do anything that you don't do for ponds.
We don't, we don't want to do anything for ponds.
There you go. That's what the expectation is.
But may I suggest, Tom Meesey, that.
I will hold you to that and that's not going to cut it because that's our assets and we're not going to be able to say, okay, Bob says we're not going to do anything. We're not going to do anything.
No, no, no. What staff requirements are. I agree with, you know.
I, I, I think Laura had hit the nail on the head. If we.
I think that'll help resolve some of the conflicts that we have going on right now, too.
Meeting of the minds and, and we're all thinking different things. So if we see it in paper, we see those are the expectations, those are mine, those are yours. And if yours are none, then put none. It'll be a very simple piece of paper and come back to the board and then we'll vote on it. That's.
It'll be exactly what you do.
Okay, well, then that'll be very easy for you guys to get it done and maybe.
May I suggest, may I suggest that this, there are a lot of details we're getting into that are really, should not need to be considered by the board. And that you, we should, you should let us go back and look at this thing in detail and come up with what, what Laura's speaking with.
Details relative to give, just give you an example, Phil.
Specifically what, what things the landscape work group might handle and what things the, the PP, the CDD will continue to handle. In other words, or the, or the, actually the Castle on behalf of the, of, of the CDD or, or on behalf of the community association, I mean.
Yep, you said, we have no privy with them at all.
No, no.
I'm sorry.
You write us out of the contract, we're done. Nothing Castle could do to support it.
That's what the expectation is. That's right.
You, you're saying that if we pass this deal and it goes through and the work group does it, Castle's out of the picture.
Absolutely.
Well, I.
For GFCDD assets, they're still community assets and the castle will be doing. That's a different ball.
Phil, was there anything else?
Well, just that I, I, I think you ought to send it back i- i- in, in my belief.
I, I'm not having a problem sending it back. I'm just want to make sure that when we send it back, what are we going to get? Because I don't want to come back here two weeks later and we haven't moved anywhere.
Well, I, I think we can come to an agreement, but others may disagree.
Other than the Monday meeting, what, what was left on the table? I'm not trying to be intransigent, but we hashed it out for almost three hours.
Okay, so let's, let's get that in writing. What the expectations, what do you think you're going to do? What do you think? And then get that to Laura and Laura gets, I mean, if, if it's something that is going to be that easy, I mean, we can even add to the continuation meeting of next week, couldn't we?
I'd rather not rush it. I'd rather focus. I mean.
Well, because I've been told that it's going to be so easy, none and all.
It doesn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't say some one thing. It doesn't need to be done immediately.
I appreciate your patience in all this. They've had meetings. I have been. Oh, Judge Schofield. They have had meetings. I'm the fellow who has been given by P-PAC the responsibility to put this group together, which I have done, I think successfully. I have not been included in any of these meetings and I would request that Mr. Meesey be recused from this because he has a personal interest in not following through with this. And I would be the, come the point person for P-PAC to be included in these meetings because I know the details of what's been going on and what we're doing and how we're doing it. And I know that there have been some statements made today that are not accurate at all. And rather than belabor everybody, it's not worth doing that. I just request that you would, would take action on that. Thank you.
That's a P-PAC decision, in my opinion.
Okay.
And then again, and again, there's no basis that I've heard from Mr. Meesey to.
Either do I.
Not participate in these matters.
No, that's a P-PAC decision, not ours. That's my opinion anyway.
Rich, yeah. Because I want to wrap this up.
Richard Berg for the association. We're talking about landscaping and lying above it is the bigger issue of governing Pelican Preserve. What went wrong here? That P-PAC is a member of the Board of Supervisors inserted himself and dominated the P-PAC process. What you need to do, send this back to P-PAC and the association with instructions to keep the supervisors here.
No, I respectfully disagree. There's nothing illegal about it.
Or you're going to get all the Pelican Preserve issues brought to the supervisor level if you don't let P-PAC do its job.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm taking one step at a time. At this one time, I don't, I don't see there's an illegality. That's why I asked our attorney.
In my opinion, you cannot tell a board member not to attend.
Or I'm a resident.
Or participate in.
I go to P-PAC to participate.
I want to get clear on that. Well, there's no, nothing I can do or to say that, that you can't do that.
That's correct.
We, I can't do that.
That's correct.
We've got to follow the rules on this and that, that's what's got, got me concerned on all this is if, if you would go back to that, I'd wind the clock back and never even have a P-PAC. This should be under the HOA, all of it. But the issue is, we know what happened years ago with the, the former deal and we got where we are today because of that mess. So it's hard, hard to wind the clock back.
No.
So we, we got to figure out, Bob, would you entertain a motion to table this on the basis that there is discussion between the parties to come back with an alternate proposal that, I know the word please everybody isn't going to happen. I can see that right now. But to try to get this thing to move forward, because right now it seems like it's black or it's white.
I would certainly entertain that motion with only one caveat. Is if Castle, the management company, I don't care if it Castle, if a management company doesn't manage the day-to-day and it's handled by, if they would agree that they don't need Castle in this process, then I would table it. But if it's, the point is it's a all or none and that Castle being retained at cost to the residents, I can't agree to that.
Guys, is there a, a person at Castle that, you brought up the deal. I, I know in our community, if a tree falls down at night, the first phone call is to access to control. Second phone call is to the landscape chairman. Landscape chairman then calls the company with whom we have a contract. I mean, this ain't rocket science.
Well, this is what I'm proposing in the document that I asked for to lay this stuff out. These are going to be the responsibilities. If something happens, this is the chain of command. What are the expectations?
Well, I was going to go one step, step further. Can we have a copy of the agreement with Castle Group that delineates their duties and responsibilities under the contract? What are they doing that earns them $50,000 a year?
And would you like to have a copy of the contract between PPCA and Castle Management?
That is correct.
Okay, I think that's fair. The total contract, right?
Correct. I think that's fair. Yeah. But I, I just, it's not that I don't trust Castle Group. I don't trust any management companies because I've seen them all. They don't have landscaping abilities. And I know, understand your position of management. But I, I know what happens with ours when something comes up. They dial 561-9809 and my phone rings.
I will make the motion that we table this till the next meeting. And in that interim time, we will try and come to an accommodation, however unsuccessful we are in the past. I'm optimistic we can do it in the future.
Will your motion include getting something to Laura with, in addition to the contract, the numbers and information that she needs?
Yeah, what?
If, if there's a plan to go forward, to get the numbers that need to be done, that you're presenting that this group would, would have.
To lay out the responsibilities. Who's going to do what? How much staff time are you expecting? I'll set the new motion.
Yeah, and we've already gotten a, a letter from Ameriskate Thomas who called in the 2047.
So we have a motion and a second, Bill. Doug, did you get that?
Boy, I did. Thank you.
Okay, now, motion and a second to table this till our next meeting. Okay, now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that 5-0?
Mr. Guy is no longer on the call, so it is 4-0.
Laura, okay, thank you.
We lost Bill.
Thank you all. If we can get that, then we can be to do it again. Do it again. Thank you all. Next item, action items. New members at the Stony Brook Advisory Committee. Is this yours, Laura?
Warren. Mr. Davies, please approach the podium. He is here on behalf of the Stony Brook Advisory Committee to present the people that they would like to have on their committee based on the recent elections that they held.
Warren Davies, Stony Brook Advisory Committee. With the establishment of our resolution as of May 1st, three of our members retired from the board. But they were also HOA members. We conducted a survey of the community. We had seven people apply and we interviewed them last week and selected two of them are here. Garrett Lippold here, Dave Nickerson here, Tom Murphy, who is on vacation also. I think the, the members, the people that applied were all good people. It's hard to pick from one another. I think we picked three of the best that we had. And if you, I don't know if you have your, their bios with you, but it really explains their scope of, of knowledge through their, their work history.
So to avoid an issue that could come down the road that we've experienced before, you all don't have any conflicts of interest with any other boards or deals, do you?
Yes. So we, we selected, and this is the recommendation from the Stony Brook Advisory Committee, that these two gentlemen and Mr. Murphy be appointed by the Board of Supervisors.
Warren, would it be pertinent, do you have the, the names of the other four that were in, in consideration?
I do. I do.
Would you mind sharing that?
We had Mrs. Gailey, Anderson Partridge, Kathy Flaherty, Pamela Geiger, Vincent LaFredo, besides Gary Lippold, Tom Murphy and David Nickerson.
Thank you, sir.
So, so the, who was the ones that got together that made the selection of these three out of the?
It was the, the advisory committee actually stayed together until May 1st. So we kept the people that were on the advisory committees. We had six people interviewed. They couldn't have the seventh because there would have been four members from the HOA, which would have given us them a quorum. So in, in keeping with the, the rules, we just had the six. So then it was, it, it lasted pretty much, it was for your last meeting, actually, that we had that interview.
Is there a motion to approve these three people to the Stony Brook Advisory Committee?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You got it. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Capital Project loan dispersment.
Yes, I need some money. Okay, well, the district needs some money.
Did we adjourn and I go home?
Um. I won't show all the pages behind it just to back up for where I got my totals from. So I am requesting to have our first dispersment from the First Horizon Loan in the amount of $334,000 to cover invoices that we have paid for capital project expenditures through April 21st. I summed them up below in your board books, the, all the detail, the grilling detail, each individual invoice is in there. But this is the breakdown. So it comes out to $333,643.08. So I rounded it up to 344. Or 334.
Any, any discussion? Was there any particular reason I had about three trees of invoices in there?
That's, I gave, that's all the backup.
Okay. I got through that. Wow.
Yep, that's what I've been hanging on to.
Any discussions on this?
No.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And then the last one is Elle.
Video inspection for the Gateway Stormwater Basin 4. I think you had what, three, three bids?
Good afternoon, Elle Harris, Gateway Services District. We had seven people at our pre-bid meeting. We did get back two sealed packages. Both of these sealed packages were from experienced companies. We've used both of them for these services in the past. They both had very good references. And basically it just came down to the bottom line number. And we will recommend MRI. They did do Basin 5.
Questions? I've, I've got one. Is Extreme Golf Course, is that Brad's firm?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, the only. MRI did Daniel's Preserve.
The only question that I had had to do with the Daniels Preserve work when.
It's the same here.
It was located below it and then they had to go get somebody else to do it, which ended up being Extreme.
Yeah.
I kind of think, why do we?
I, I don't, I don't know why I want to go back to with the problems we had at Daniels that were, I, I felt we were misled by MRI on that.
Well, I feel like we did, we Gateway Services did not know the problems that were existing in Daniels Preserve until MRI sent a diver down there to find it. Now, that was beyond normal repairs. That particular job had to be re-engineered. We brought in Tetra Tech. We brought in Home on Tez. Mr. Tinko, you were in on the discussions. Lauren Kenny was in on the discussions.
MRI was in on the first one.
MRI was in on the discussions as well as.
The one that made the recommendation to spend the $250,000 based upon their investigation of which we came back and after we got more people involved in it, we spent substantial less money.
Right, because it's.
Was that Brian's or? Because I, I believe that Brian had.
That came up after, the, the repair came up after Brian was gone.
Correct, but, but the recommendation for the repair prior to, it was when Brian was here.
Recommendation was the $250,000.
I thought it was, yeah, yeah. I thought it was $500,000. Yes, Elle.
Also, that repair was to put in a new pipe because we were told, and again, you were at the table, you were at the table when we were sitting right here. And I even suggested, why can't we just modify the existing pipes, come out, put in a 45 and a grate on the top? And what was we told?
No, can't do that.
You can't do that. It's underwater. But let me finish, please. The, the, the design that was the very high number, I forget what you just said, the 200, that was to put in a whole new pipe, wiggle it through the existing utilities and put, leave the existing pipe there, which again was put in and buried below, it was below the pond bottom.
My whole decision on that was based on the fact that I was told by MRI, that 48-inch pipe was packed end to end full. And it was not. It wasn't even close to it. I was misled.
For the amount of money difference between the two, Extreme has a lot more credibility in
That's exactly.
in what we've done at Pelican. So you might save a nickel here, but it's going to cost you a dollar later. Are they both competent, Elle, as far as you're concerned?
As far as I'm concerned, both are competent.
Just looking at the money.
Yes, now I might also throw this in. We would like to have maybe a 15% to 20% cushion for unknowns. Every time we do this.
But you do that on either one.
Right, correct.
Right, yes.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. Tony, what's the language? Well, we don't accept the lowest bidder. We take the most responsive or whatever.
I think the staff and the reports of the lowest, most responsive, best bidder proposal, most advantageous to the district has to be by a competent, qualified bidder proposer. And the board can't take into account, and I guess the question is that the staff take into account the experiences on the prior projects as to whether or not, and, and they're making the recommendation to the board.
We did.
And so the board.
However, it is the board's decision.
That's correct.
My nickel's worth is I got a lot more confidence in Extreme than I did in MRI. Because the whole Daniels thing and.
So in, in your, so the opinion is that proposal is most advantageous to the district based upon prior experiences.
And I like to save a nickel. Don't get me wrong. I'll, I'll fight for a nickel, but.
Top of the penny.
Well, this is for, it's for the video inspection only, right?
Yeah, and that, that's my thing.
They're going to give it to us regardless, what's there, there.
Yeah, I'm not trying to abandon or throw out MRI. I am just, on this deal here, still have a bad taste in my mouth from what we were going to spend at Daniels.
Yes.
And I got one heck of a lot of information and a much better solution after we got Extreme.
Right, involved.
And, and I, I, I could agree with that if we're, but for this particular project, whether they'd be willing to give us in the saving the money, I, I think, I mean, if they're going to give us video inspection in a report, I don't think they can, you know, like, how can they mask that?
you know, like, how can they mess that up?
Well, that's what they gave us on the other.
Well.
Well, they did.
They said that the pipe was completely packed and it wasn't.
And they messed it up.
They messed it up.
But it wasn't a video, a full, that we had then, Al, at Daniels? I, I don't recall. I think it said it was 90%.
I think you're right. I remember them saying that one end was completely blocked.
One end, one end had stones on it.
I have a real low confidence level on this type of deal with them.
That gets back to whether they are competent. If, if the, the last time they said it was 90%, it turned out to be, what was the real result? How much was the block?
The one end was completely buried.
Well, the one, and that's what they told us.
And they did tell us that.
Was buried with stone. They, the builder had that literally just dropped the big boulders. But there was approximately 90% blockage to the pipe, and I think that's what Extreme divers told us when they went out there.
Hadn't had the knowledge of the pipe being totally blocked, we would have ended up with where Extreme took us to, and that was going to the end and putting in the deals.
And it would have started there.
And it would have started there.
Would have saved us money overall. So I will make a motion that we accept the Extreme bid, even at the extra cost.
And I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was it three and I hear?
It was Doug.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Three to one.
Three to one.
Thank you.
Consent agenda items. Anybody have any ones they want to pull on A, B, or C?
I do not.
I do not. Doug, did you have any that you wanted to pull?
I did not.
Thank you. Motion to approve consent agenda, agenda items five, eight, B, and C.
I so moved.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four oh. Future board business, President's Council, did we get a date?
We did not.
Okay, we still.
The only thing that came up at the last meeting was that the dates that we have proposed were not going to work because at least two board members were not going to be available.
Yeah, so we're looking at pushing out to June.
We're just going to to be continued it again.
Yeah, George, if, Doug, if you could just coordinate with Georgia, she's the one that takes care of all this, so.
I mean, I cannot tend to be a Zoom. I mean, if, I don't, you know, that's no big deal. What is it going to be held at?
I don't know. We hadn't decided that either.
If we do it here.
Yeah, I mean.
A problem because.
We talked about maybe doing it like at Denny Grimes, for the amount of people we normally, they hold about, we can get about 35 or 40 people in there.
And what, and we do have Zoom capabilities there?
Yes.
Yes. And what is the proposed date if we did that?
I don't have one.
Okay, I, I had.
That's what I worked on. So what I would ask is if there's any conflicts in June, if you guys would just let, send that to Georgia.
We've got the trip to San Antonio, the 12th, the
Oh, for the AWWA.
12, 13, 14th of June.
And I'm going to be away that same time period, starting on June 6th. I'll be returning.
You could just send your.
Returning the 15.
Yeah, I'll be back for the meeting.
We have that board meeting.
I'll be back for the board.
Please email Georgia the dates you are not available in June.
Okay.
And actually, you know what? Let's also put June and July, just if there's, if there's any, any dates that you've got, travel or you're not going to be available in June or July, just to be safe.
Okay.
Good point.
And she'll coordinate when everybody's available based on that then.
Good.
Supervisor comments, Flavia?
Uh, I just have a few regarding the, the street, the lights of the parking lot and the soccer field. And then some of the landscaping lights, Griffin and 82, did we, is Bill going there to check? Did he check? Was I crazy about those lights not working?
I will have to get with Jim tomorrow. I assigned that to him and have been too busy to follow up, but I know that I did mention something to Bill. I don't know what the status of that is, but I will find out for you.
Okay, if you can just copy me on the email, that'd be great. And also regarding the sidewalk repairs, I know we don't have the staff, we don't have the staff to do it right now as we originally planned, and then you're going to look on a vendor to try to get those repairs done.
On Gateway and Griffin?
That, yeah.
I have that for next time. It was outside of my, there was, oh, there was, I have a large proposal coming for next time from Atlantic Southern to do all sidewalk repairs up and down Gateway and Griffin. It was outside of my approval limit, and it was too close to the meeting, so I'll be bringing that to the next meeting.
All right, and just make sure that includes the, right here, the soccer field entrance, and I, I took a picture and I sent it to Jim.
Okay.
Which is like a few inches. And then if so, if we can get clarification from Tony regarding Stony Brook, the area of the sidewalk that is damaged that, I don't know if it's Gateway Services or Stony Brook, however, it needs to be taken care of because that's the worst than anywhere else in Gateway.
Yeah, I guess the question is the only way to really determine where it's located is a survey, and I don't know if we have a survey of its exact location.
Well, we have, we have, I think, what, 15? Oh, it's been fixed?
Yeah.
On the outside of the gate.
Gateway Services went out fixed it last week.
Oh, the Pebble Brook is done.
No, it's not Pebble Brook that I'm talking about. I'm talking about, you know, the area, right?
It's on the curve. There was a conservation area.
Yes, there.
In the west.
Yeah, outside the walls. Yeah, it's outside the gate.
On the west side.
But we need to know if it's HOA, it's Stony Brook, or it's Gateway Services, because when we look at Tony and I, we believe it's HOA, not us. But it needs to be done. I mean, that is really severe over there. So, so if, if it's a survey that needs it, we have the money in the budget for it.
Yeah, would be a survey. That's the only way you're going to identify the location.
As far as.
Well, the two things I had were the assessment nothing, I'll, we handled that. And then the second thing was the, oh God. I don't remember what the second.
Longer breaks.
Yeah, longer break, no. No, that's, I'll just leave it at that.
Doug, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Um, one is, so I watched, I think it was members of staff and maybe a vendor, I think they were doing that sidewalk repair in Stony Brook last week. And of course, they caught it right when it was raining. So I was just curious if staff has like a tent available to them as we're getting in the rainy season and there's repairs. It may not even be a big deal, but I just, I, I saw those guys out there and I was on my way out or I would have turned around, went to the house and got a tent for them, but
We do have.
They were in the rain. Huh?
We do have one.
Okay, all right.
Big umbrella.
With all the wind.
Well, you can secure it. I mean, you can, you can anchor it down there. But anyway, if, if we've got one, then that's fine. It was just not available at the time. Yeah, there was, um, so as P-PAC, or I should say Pelican is creating this landscaping committee, it sounds like they've got some, some subject matter experts in a couple of different areas. It, as I think we had talked about before, about maybe standing up a landscaping committee for Gateway, what I would ask is maybe if we could tap into some of those resources in Pelican, whether it's, you know, if they want to commit, if they don't want to commit full time, but maybe even liaison, that we can, we can leverage some of their subject matter expertise, and it would be nice if that's, if that's possible.
That's entirely possible.
There's another one too, Doug, along that line, and we didn't even bring it up today after we had enough going, is that Pelican, they, they still have an issue over there. Our discussion here, in my opinion, is only limited to, and our responsibility is for our assets.
GSCDD.
Our assets. They have assets of their own.
Right.
As far as I'm concerned, I, I'm not touching that. I don't want to touch that with a 10-foot pole. If they want to go on ahead and have it, their problem is, is that it, it's going, if the, if the two are together and butting up against each other, it would sure be nice if there was some uniformity. But if they want to live that way, I suppose they could do it and have Capital Group or whatever their name is, Castle Group, they could manage the, the local one and the CDD does the other. But in my.
Which is exactly the proposal.
In my comments, I'll further that. Anything else?
Uh, but, but on the landscape that you just said, I don't know if it was clear or not, Doug, but that group was authorized by P-PAC in September of 21 and has functioned since then.
Yes, yeah, and I do know there is, there, there's some really nice skill set in that group.
The, the problem that the group hasn't been more effective, if you consider that, is because of the reluctance of the work group to assume duties that are currently responsible for Castle. I mean, kind of, if they did it, then they'd be criticized for overstepping. If they don't do it, now they're being criticized for ineffectiveness.
Well, my, my, my point is, you know, this board is made up of, of individuals through all the communities, and P-PAC is represented. So if we do create committees, you know, I think we should be looking at tapping into Pelican resources as well, because there's some really good resources over in Pelican as well. So, uh, but I think that's, that's it for me.
Okay, I had two things. One, Georgia's been busy sending out emails. We got a follow-up to the last meeting of a document dated, I think, 2008. Flavia's, Flavia initiated this. I never, never have seen that document before. This was the one on the landscape that was done by DMS years ago.
It was a study.
Brian Lamb's firm, I guess.
It was a study, Doug.
A study? Yeah, it, it, it implied, I don't think it was approved because it, the copy I had implied it was a draft. It was approved?
It was not, as far as I know.
Was not, okay. And then the second part.
It died when they realized what the money was going to be. They're like, yeah, later on.
Then the second thing of that I want to make for clar- clarification is there was another document on a, what it looked like to be a Gateway landsca- or a design review plan.
Yeah, so that matters.
That document, I will tell you right now, is Exhibit C to the Gateway Greens' covenants. It was an attempt by Gateway in the late 1980s, I think, to placate anybody coming into the community, and at that time, it was predominantly Gateway Greens. That was about it. There might have been one or two other ones like Waterford. So you see some of their requirements blended into, and people have asked me in Gateway Greens, what's, what's Waterford Village got to do with us? Well, it doesn't. It's, it's the document that we were given in 1989 by Westinghouse Gateway Communities. So that Exhibit C, I'll tell everybody, that, that, that's our document, and believe me, we are doing everything we can to amend it right now because it, it's worthless. It needs to be brought up. It's 30 years old. It needs to be done, but I don't think there's anything in there that I would want to capture at this point in time. It might be a starting point to go forward, but I'll just leave that at that. Then the last one I want to talk about was this issue of what we talked about earlier with the, the way we governance. I have a real problem with us getting involved where we're dealing with non-elected bodies for very important activities. And I think we're going down a shaky slope, but when I hear some of the stories, and my phone rang off the hook these last three or four days, of how some things were ran when it was under the HOA, that, that, that doesn't get, that doesn't make me feel real good. The last thing I want to be doing is going to court and defending something that was done wrong because they didn't have the proper notification, didn't get the right legal opinion, whatever. That scares me. That really scares me. Right now with PPAC, I, 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 I'm kind of going with the fact that I've got a proven entity with a track record.
PPC.
PPAC.
PPAC.
AC is correct.
AC, the advisory committee.
Yeah, the committee, advisory committee.
Anyway, so it's just, I was very upset when I heard some of the things I heard that an association, an HOA was doing, which are, man, my attorneys told me, you don't dare do that. And that scares me because if I'm living on their vote or their decision, and I don't know how they hire contractors, I don't know any of that. I've not seen it. I've not checked it. Alls I'm going by is what I was told. And that's not kosher. You can't do that stuff.
The one comment on that was, when Castle hired to do the board block, that was a cluster.
Yeah.
That, that ended up coming to this board to give authorization.
And I mean, that was an example of the skill of their management company, but I'll leave that.
So I'm.
Back to the revitalization. I think this is a great document. The Band Landscape Work Group is very interested in, in Pelican, digesting, plagiarizing, and digesting what they can at no cost.
Oh, that's going to cost you. That's a thousand dollars just for reading it.
It's a good, it's a good.
I don't know why it was buried because it, it's wonderful.
Yeah.
So I, I share with you.
Well, anyway, I'm just hoping that in two weeks, when we come back and reconvene, the groups have got together and we can do a resolution of this, but, and move it forward, but.
I'm an eternal optimist. I'm sure we will.
Okay, dope.
And I had one, I had one more quick thing if you're, if you're done.
I'm sorry, Doug?
Yeah, I had one more, just quit, really quick thing. I completely forgot, but when, one thing I'd like for us to consider at some point in the, in the next couple of months is doing a board workshop, an offsite, like we've done in the past with Chelsea and, and our leadership staff. I think it'd be a great opportunity for us to be able to look at kind of where we're at, direction, synergize with, with the new district manager coming in. We can talk in more detail. I just wanted you guys to let that marinate with the, with the supervisors for a little bit to consider it.
Our dates for Ju- June and July, then allow for that so that somebody can see when we're all together to do that.
Chelsea has a bunch of vacation in June and July. Just telling you.
Yeah, well, let's, we can worry about the date, but I just wanted to at least socialize the concept because I think it would be advantageous.
I think it's a good idea, too.
Yeah, thank you. That's it, for sure.
Kenny, I let you know that the utilities team does have a 10 by 10 high-vis canopy for the utility crews. They're just too hard-headed to use it.
Okay, well, they can either get wet or not get wet, so that decision's upon them.
But they have one.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Kenny.
We, before we do that, just for clarification on that issue, we advised the board at this meeting that we desire advice concerning the pending litigation between the district and Ford Line, Inc., and requesting the closed-door session, and requesting that this meeting be continued until what date is good next week for everybody, Thursday.
Next Thursday, same time? Thursday is the P-PAC meetings. P-PAC.
What, what time's that, Phil?
Actually, next Thursday, one, start at one, we usually start at two, but start at one.
Would it be over by four? Why can't we do it next Thursday?
I can't do Thursday. I can, I can dial, well, I can't dial in if it's closed door. I can only do, which, again, if, if we have a, if we have majority, that's fine. I'm going to, I'll be out of town, I think, Thursday.
How about Friday?
Be here tomorrow.
No, I'm going, I think Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I can do it, you know.
Tuesday afternoon?
Tuesday, um, that is the 10th.
It's Mother's Day in Mexico.
There's a six o'clock meeting in here.
If we start it early, if we do three, I just probably need to be done by five, so.
Oh, it'll be an hour at the most.
All right, so if you do four, we can do four to five, or we can do 3:30 to 4:30. I can do.
Yeah, the 10th, Tuesday's the 10th. Wednesday's the 11th.
3:00 PM on the 10th, I'm sorry. Time it is, I thought it was at three. That's why I said four. Can we do it four? Will four work for everybody?
Four works fine, as long as we can get, I can get out by five.
Yeah, I don't, I don't picture any more than that. Four to five then next Tuesday.
The 28th, May 10th, 2022 at 4:00 PM.
The 10th, Tuesday, the 10th, 4:00 PM.
Yeah, for a closed-door session.
I will.
The continuation and closure.
Yes. I am actually working from home that day. I just checked my calendar. I have repair work at my house. I need to be there for it. It should be done, but I don't really want to drive an hour to come here just for that.
So you call in?
I can't.
Can't do that, can't wait closed door.
Sorry, I can, I will drive. If I have to, I'll drive from the Cape to come for it, but I mean, that'd be the only thing I'm coming here for.
Yes.
I can be here Monday.
Monday, in my opinion, is too soon because I need to get a notice in the paper, in the safety.
We can do it Friday afternoon.
Wednesday afternoon, or Friday.
Well, if Monday's too late, you can't do, or Friday the 13th?
Wednesday, I'm.
Friday the 13th.
I'm off that day.
I, I'm out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
We're, we're, where we're at. Tuesday.
Tuesday at 4:00.
May 10th at 4:00 PM.
Okay, and I will contact Mr. Guy and see if he feels physically capable for me to bring to the meeting.
Right.
Do we need him?
If we have a quorum, don't.
Quorum consists of Doug, Ed, and Bob.
Have three here.
Well, there's three, all right.
You'll be here, correct?
No, she's gone.
You missed that whole.
I'm blocking out here. Two more minutes.
She's leaving until September.
30 days? I'm sorry.
30 days, yeah.
She's gone. So we got, we got to have him there.
Okay.
I'm here. I'll be here, so we'll have, we'll have quorum.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, thank you.
And you say you can get Bill, right?
I'm going to try to see if these guys can come for a one-hour meeting.
We want to reconvene the meeting, continue, continue the meeting.
For closed-door sessions at 4:00 PM. Continue this meeting, and also have a closed-door session at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, May 10th.
Tony's going to bring pizza.
Motion to make that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Especially Tony bringing the pizza.
Aye.
Aye.
I heard the second.
You want any trophies? We are delayed. Okay, thank you all.